It is 7:15, and welcome to the Norton Planning Board Meeting of February 28. The surroundings, if you're home watching on the camera, are obviously different than typical town hall setting, because we expected and have been joined by a fair number of people who are interested in one of the projects on the agenda tonight. But as I guess Murphy's Law, we created plenty of space, but now we don't have an audience. Nevertheless, perhaps that's not on the agenda until 7:50, and maybe people will be coming in for 7:50. In any case, on the agenda for tonight are the typical internal items. We have an informal presentation for 156 Mansfield Avenue. A little awkward here, but there's an A&R. I'm an applicant for an A&R at 7:35, which obviously I'll recuse myself from. We did have a continuance for the two Blue Star special permits. The applicant has asked for continuance to our March 12 meeting, and I assume the board will grant that continuance. And then 7:50, as I mentioned earlier, is a continuance of Fairland Farms Solar Next Energy LLC. Since it's just about 7:20, and to give you a little more time, Mr. Souza, I'd ask you, if you're prepared, to make your presentation again. This is an informational submittal, and anxious to hear what you have to say.
Hold it if you can. Yeah, if you can hold it. It's a little better.
Good evening. Thank you. Anyone who's available on the turn-in, I'm Souza. My office is just down the street from 48 West Main. Seems like it's been forever. And here tonight, representing Grace Landau, and Grace is owned the property question for many years.
There you go.
There we go. I'm sorry. As indicated, property is owned by Grace Landau. And what we're attempting to do here is to do something that needs to meet the community, and hopefully generates a nice project. It is a proposal to convert what is a single-family residence from an in-law apartment, according to the assessor's information, into a multi-family project, proposing five condominium units. And Jacob's, Jacob's District Engineering, has been working on this more than I have in terms of the specifics, so not as to be way to the point. I'm going to turn the microphone over to him, let him tell you.
Good evening. Jacob's, Jacob's District Engineering. This is just a concept plan, if you will. Shows five townhouse units, three bedrooms each. We have had the property flagged by a botanist, environmental consultant, restoration. We went out and relocated the flags with the total station method, and got an upland area of 53,000, a little over 53,000, 53,526 square feet. And that's why we limited to five townhouse units. We have plenty of parking in the front. We're proposing to tie it to Townwater, and that's about 15, 16 apartments. We're not in the flood zone. We're not in any ACEs, or any NHPs, as well.
Just internally for the board members, we only have one mic, so that the audience can hear us. If you want to make a comment, I'll just pass the mic down to whoever wants it.
If you stated I may have missed it, what's the zoning of this property?
If I may, I think I would also point out to the board that, you know, we're aware that Village Commercial is typically, hopefully, a mix of both commercial establishments and residential uses. Given this specific area and location on Mansfield Avenue, the fact that it is present at least anyhow surrounded by residential uses, it's not an area that is conducive to walking, there's no on-street parking. And in case you're wondering what led us to propose something that's strictly residential use, we had all of those things in mind when looking at what might be done with the property. And I've had some comments from your town planner already on how we might improve this project, suggestions for leaving space for a future sidewalk in front. But the demand, we think, is there to our more residential business. And, you know, we truly believe it's not a proposal for something that's out of place. Here it is. If this were a site that was adjacent to other businesses, I think it would be a different story. But right now, looking at what might happen in the near future, we just don't see commercial development across the street or adjacent to this property. And because of wetlands on one particular side, on the one side of the property, not sure that's going to happen in any of them. So I know you have a busy schedule. We're open to comments, suggestions, and of course, we'll be seeing a request for a special permit from us in the future. But I've always found it a good practice to try to work with boards. Any of you that have worked with me before know that as a kind of transparent person, I encourage all my clients to be that way. I think we wind up with better projects for the community, that we can somehow collaborate together to put something in that's kind of useful.
This is a fundamental question. I'm a little lost as to exactly where this is. Could you give me some landmarks in terms of...
Northeastern savings space?
Yep.
Heading on the same side of the street, towards the center of town, about two lots closer. There is, there are actually, there are actually two properties here. One is an empty lot, the other that currently has the building on it, and this merges those two pieces of property together. But it's just down the street to, if you will, there are residences behind on Smith Street, residents to the other side, the Mobile Home Park across the street, and a reservoir across the street.
Okay. That's right. Thank you.
Not too far off.
Any questions or comments from board members? Vice Chairman.
I'm sorry, at the beginning of your presentation, you're putting in five units, is this one floor, several floors? They're designed, I believe, to be townhouse units, so they will be multi-level. The foundation, I mean, on the proposal plan here, each unit has a foundation area of 24 by 36. Not sure that will be the absolute final proposal, but, you know, it might differ, but not dramatically.
And this is the Village Commercial zone?
I believe so, yes.
Have you considered putting the parking lots behind the buildings instead of in front of them?
That was also suggested to me. I understand that in Village Commercial, the impetus is to attempt to bring the buildings closer to the street and tie the parking behind. That's certainly something we'll consider at the final proposal. It seemed appropriate in this particular instance, where this was going to be all residential, that you might want to move it a little bit further from the street to cut down on the road noise. This way it would be in the front. There needs to be a raised berm, which you, I don't know if you can see it that far away, but there's, you know, some landscaping in there, but that should be raised, landscaped, and that also is intended to cut down on road noise. If it were commercial, I think we would put the building right closer to the street, no parking behind. But residential, that's a busy street, and this is a lot of noise. Parking spots? I believe we have 13, yeah? 13. Yep, that's back on five units, two and a half per unit. You know, trying to work within all the parameters here. The other thing we're considering here, too, is that we don't want to build something that's too expensive for the town. You know, you could build higher-end units, but, you know, that's, people who normally know that I close a lot of mortgages for local banks, that's just not what I see selling in the community right now. Norton got quite a bit of higher-end condominiums through a couple of other projects that I worked on that I'm not going to plug here, but there's a fair bit of high-end condominiums available in the community. This is intended to be more for younger families, millennials.
Any other questions from board or the audience? I guess hearing none, we'll look forward to your formal application, and thank you for the...
Thank you. You know, Mr. Fernandez, and I'd say to you and all the board members, that if there are any afterthoughts here, if you will, you know, please convey them to me, and we'll attempt to incorporate them into our formal file. Happy to consider anything.
Thank you.
And thank you for your time. I appreciate it, and everyone have a good evening.
The next item on the agenda I need to recuse myself from, because I, on behalf of our family, am part of the application, so I'll turn this over to Vice Chairman.
And final question, is there anything in our finders, or do you have a blank there? How many sets?
We have the...
Probably space these out amongst themselves, yes?
Five, I believe. Oh, four, four. So I'll hold the Mylar since it's...
Four pages in the binder. That's the application.
Pass that one down. Split amongst themselves here.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll present it here, only because it's difficult enough to see.
Okay, that's fine. Do you want to grab the other microphone up here?
Thank you, every board member. Okay. What we're proposing is an A&R that will be serviced by the common driveway that was approved earlier last, this year, last year. And just for purposes of fresh memory, this is on South Worcester Street, on land that has been family-owned since the early 50s. Board approved the common drive that came in here that was originally, at least in terms of family planning, was only going to serve at the time of one lot. My son convinced his sister and my son-in-law, who is here, Scott Christensen, to also build. And we now need to create that separate lot for that separate family member. So the A&R that is presented to you does that by creating this, what is labeled as Lot 3, and it will be separated for the time being unless some other family member is looking to do anything, by a potential buildable lot in the middle, but it's tied, that's why there's a strip of land behind Lot 3 that ties it with the other 43 acres. So the lot that we're asking approval on is Lot 3. It creates only one buildable lot at the moment, although technically, I suppose, the lot in the middle could be built on without a curever A&R, but that makes no sense without the 43-acre parcel attached to it. So for the moment, we're looking for approval for Lot 3. It has the requisite frontage of 150 feet. It has nearly 130,000 square feet of upland, excuse me, of other, of square footage, with uplands being maybe 3,000. Right? A little different being on the side of the building.
Mr. Fernandez, just to confirm, there is, existing Lot 1 is where the start of the common drive?
Right.
Off of Worcester, correct? And that will pass through, that driveway passes into Lot 2R as labeled?
Yes.
Which then cuts behind this proposed lot. So currently, there's two lots, correct?
No, currently, there's one lot, here again, on what was approved originally, and there is a parcel currently. What you're looking at has Lot 1, which was approved as part of the special permit for the common driveway. And then we had created just a sliver that we thought wouldn't be built on, but just to get the common driveway to what is now Lot 3. Again, Lot 3 wasn't anticipated in short run. We expected at some point, one of the family members would want it, but the middle piece, the common driveway, had to go through it to service what is now going to be Lot 3. So here again, technically, the piece in the middle now becomes a buildable lot, but it's tied to the 43 acres, and that frankly doesn't make sense for a number of reasons. But since there are no plans at the moment to develop anything on it, we're just going to leave it as part of the 43 acres, and we need the approval to subdivide Lot 3.
Any questions from board members?
Joe, do you recall what the, what the dimensions of that driveway, helping that drive?
The length? I want to say it was, I think the original plan was something like 1,100 feet.
The width?
Oh, the width, yeah. By dial, I have to be 18 feet cleared, 14 feet still, not known whether it's going to be in gravel, stone base, or an asphalt, but the width is 14 feet of surface.
And what?
Will we approve the driveway? That's a question. Will we already approve that?
Yes.
What's the length that the common driveway busts Lot 3? Do you know that?
That, I don't. Let me see if there's a scale. I'm guessing, again, it's not specified, but it looks to be about 25 feet.
Has any of these lots been deeded out yet?
No. Well, the only one that has been deeded out is Lot 1.
Now, at some point, I know it's a common loan, but you're going to arrange for easements to be able to service in that area?
Oh, sure. In terms of, there'll be an agreement, there'll have to be an agreement between my daughter and my son, and, you know, they've talked informally. I don't know how formal will be, but, you know, I don't mediate a family agreement. They'll have to decide how they're going to handle the maintenance and construction related.
Any other questions? Joe, just to confirm, the common drive, does that exist at this point or no?
It's under construction. It's been cleared, pretty much rough-graded, although the cul-de-sac piece of it, that still has to be cleared. Again, the intent was to do that in a couple of years, which the special permit has a life of two years. This was a bit of a pleasant surprise, but it was a bit of a stress.
All right. Any other questions from the board members? Is anyone interested in making a recommendation to approve the endorsement?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Hearing none. It is approved unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, let's start the signature process. Well, Joe, plus his information up there.
I'll sign this chairman.
I don't sign that word, but it doesn't, doesn't matter.
Yeah. Okay, I didn't know, yeah, how that, do you sign off on those or no?
Yeah, I typically do.
Yeah, okay.
But obviously, I'm not on this one.
Yeah.
All right, I think this one is good.
You keep the Mylar, but as the act.
Okay. Any more? Joe?
I guess personally, thank you, and as board member, let's move on to, it's 7:40. Public hearing for Blue Star is 7:45, so in the being five minutes, perhaps we can get a little bit of business in terms of this is done.
Let's do that.
We have Billson Lawrence. Do you count those?
Yes, sir.
We have a charge that comes out of our account for $175,000, $175,000, mister, few decimals there. Massacre Development Council, this is for assumed membership.
Yes.
For Paul. And I'll pass these around, so that you can look at them for acting on them. There's a review bill for $2,415.25 for Horsey Witten for Blue Star review.
Can I just pass those down so we can...
Sure. Another Horsey Witten for Blue Star, $4,025. Horsey Witten, in this case, $486.25. This is for the Norton Village Center Consulting Services. And M. Farrar account, Deputy Mason, for various office supplies, a minus $69.64. So while you folks have a chance to look at that, we also have some minutes to approve.
February 5th?
Yes, sir.
We have seven minutes for February 5th, at which all members are present. I don't know if folks have had a chance to review those minutes. And if so, if there is a motion to approve or any amendments or corrections.
Under the public hearing for Blue Star, in the second paragraph, there's a reference to VOH, I'm assuming that's Board of Health.
Or in which, which public hearing?
Under the, uh, Blue Star.
On the first page? On the first page, okay.
The second paragraph is just a reference to VOH.
Board of Health, sorry.
Board of Health. And then there was a reference to my asking some questions. I did ask a question about the sewer and the pump station, but the reference to the plan, I'd like to change to that I questioned the applicability of incorporating by reference undefined plans.
I'm sorry. Okay.
The sentence that has the, so here's the signal, ask for the sewer and pump station location, as well as if the plans are missing some notes, I just suggest I added that I questioned the applicability of incorporating by reference undefined plans.
Say that one more time, Orin, how you want it, that word. Could you just repeat that one more time?
Sure. So let me read, Mr. Siegel asked me the sewer and pump station locations and questioned the applicability of incorporating by reference to plans to undefined plans.
Okay, so strike the one sentence and then replace with...
Yeah.
Any other comments, corrections, additions, deletions? Is there a motion to approve amendments as amended?
Second.
There's a motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
And what?
We approve the draft. That's my question, we already approved that last year?
Yes. Yes.
What's the length that the butt's, the common driveway butt slot three, do you know that?
That, I don't. Let me see if there's a scale. I'm guessing, again, it's not specified, but it looks to be about 25 feet.
Has any of these lots been deeded out yet?
No, well, the only one that has been deeded out is lot one.
Now, at some point, I know it's a common rule, but you're going to arrange for easel wins today with the sewer servicing there?
Oh, sure, in terms of, there'll be an agreement, there'll have to be an agreement between my daughter and my son. And, you know, they've talked informally, I don't know how formal they'll be, but, you know, I don't mediate a family agreement. They'll have to decide how they're going to handle the maintenance and construction.
Any other questions? Joe, just to confirm, the common driveway, does that exist at this point or no?
It's under construction, it's been cleared, pretty much rough graded, although the cul-de-sac piece of it, that still has to be cleared. Again, the antlers to do that in a couple of years, which the special permit has a life of two years. This was a bit of a pleasant surprise, but it's a bit of stress.
All right, any other questions from the floor on this? Is anyone interested in making a recommendation to approve the endorsement?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed. Hearing none, it is approved unanimously. Thank you. Yeah, let's start the signature process, well, Joe. What's his information up there?
I'll sign as chairman of this?
I can sign that word, but it doesn't, doesn't work.
Yeah, okay, I didn't know, yeah, how that, do you sign off on those or no?
Yeah, I typically do.
Yeah, okay.
But obviously, not on this one.
Yeah. All right, I think this one is good.
I guess personally, thank you, and as board member, let's move on to, it's 7:40, public hearing for Blue Star, it's 7:45, so in the being five minutes, perhaps we can get a little bit of business in terms of this is done. We have Billson Lawrence, do you count those?
Yes, sir.
We have a charge that comes out of our account for $175,000, $175, mister, few decimals there. Massacre Development Council, this is for a senior membership.
Yes.
Paul, and I'll pass these around so that you can look at them for acting on them. There's a review. Bill for $2,415.25 for Horsey Witten for Blue Star review.
Can I just pass those down so we can?
Sure. Another Horsey Witten for Blue Star, $4,025. Horsey Witten, in this case, $486.25, this is for the Norton Village Center Consulting Services. And M. Farrar account, Deputy Mason, for various office supplies, a minus $69.64. So while you folks have a chance to look at that, we also have some minutes to approve. February 5th?
Yes, sir.
We have seven minutes for February 5th, at which all members are present. Folks have a chance to review those minutes? And if so, if there is a motion to approve or any amendments or corrections. Okay, or?
Under the public hearing for Blue Star, in the second paragraph, there's a reference to VOH, I'm assuming that's Board of Health.
Or in which, which public hearing?
Under the, uh, Blue Star.
On the first page, okay, yeah.
The second paragraph is just a reference to VOH.
Board of Health, sorry.
Board of Health. And then there was a reference to my asking some questions. I did ask a question about the sewer and pump station, but the reference to the plan, I'd like to change to that I questioned the applicability of incorporating by reference undefined plans.
I'm sorry, okay.
The sentence that has the, so here's the signal, asked for the sewer and pump station location, as well as if the plans are missing some notes, I just suggest I added that I questioned the applicability of incorporating by reference undefined plans.
Say that one more time, Orin, how you want it, that word? Could you just repeat that one more time?
Sure, so let me read, Mr. Siegel asked for the sewer and pump station locations and questioned the applicability of incorporating by reference to plans to undefined plans. That's it.
Okay, so strike the one sentence and then replace with.
Yeah.
Any, any other comments, corrections, additions, deletions? Is there a motion to approve amendments as amended?
Second.
There's been a motion, second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. Have folks had a chance to review the bills? And if so, is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, second.
There's a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous. I will hold off on planning board business and policies to, after our 7:50 appointment. Being 7:45, we have, had continued action on, not action, but had continued the special permit hearings for 479 and 481, both of which are Blue Star Business Park, Leonard Street, lots of one through five, and Blue Star Business Park, Leonard Street, Lot 7, building 7. The applicant has asked for a continuance. We need to continue to a date certain. I suppose what we got to do is open the, open the hearing and then immediately continue if that's your pleasure. So I had to take a motion to open those two special permit hearings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous, or any opposed? It is unanimous. Is there a motion to continue to March 12th for both of those hearings? There's been a motion, a second, any further discussion? Any further discussion?
What date we're going to continue to, Joe?
The continuance is to March 12th. We don't have a specific time, that'll depend on what other items may be on the agenda, but our March 5th, our March 5th meeting has already posted. And the applicant, in any case, has asked for a continuance to March 12th. I believe that's because of considerations being had at the Conservation Commission.
Yes.
And the ZD, Conservation Commission. All right, there's been a motion, a second, to continue both hearings to March 12th. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, it's continued unanimously.
We need to close the, or is that, I guess not.
We continue. I'd be amended early, but 7:50, we have a continuance of special permit 482, Fairland Farm, Solar Next, Sun Energy LLC. I mean, I see the applicant's here, so the floor is yours. What I'd ask you to do is use that podium, and if you have displays, but I'm also going to ask the audience, because this is, I believe, the third session, you know, we understand some of the sentiments that have been expressed, but I want to make sure that people who have not spoken have an opportunity to. So after the applicant has presented whatever new information they plan on submitting tonight, I'd ask you to line up at the podium, and I'll recognize you one by one, but we're going to place a three-minute time limit so that we can get as many people who want to voice either a question or consideration, and your three minutes will expire, and then I'll ask the applicant to respond. So, for us.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you for having us here tonight. My name's Patrick Gallagher, I'm from the law firm of Dane Torby, right with Wees and Garner. On behalf of the applicant, Next Sun Energy, I'm here with Adam Schumacher from Next Sun, and with Stacy Minihane of Hills and Thomas. I'm going to defer to them, give the explanation, and address any questions the board and members of the community have. But thank you for having us here tonight, and I'm going to hand the mic over to Adam. I also have copies of the letter here that I bring right up. This was the letter sent today, Patrick also write to Director Jusset. Thanks, Pat. And Stacy, will, I think we can go ahead and start setting those up, again.
I think where you're at that podium, it might make it easier for you to point out whatever you're, you've got on the easel.
So Stacy's going to give a more detailed explanation of the updates to the plans that we've made since the last hearing. But in general, the only significant change to the site plan was to further increase the setbacks that you're using along Bay Road. At the last hearing, one of the planning board members asked if we'd be able to increase the setback to 300 feet or 100 yards from Bay Road, and we actually reengineered the entire project and ended up using more, more tracker roads and motors in order to further optimize the space that you're using to be able to accommodate greater setback along Bay Road. So now the minimum distance from Bay Road to the solar panels is 285 feet, and that's only in one spot. The majority of the distance along, or the majority of the panel on the east side of the raise are 300 feet from Bay Road. And this has, of course, also further increased the setback from the residences. So that was the main, the main change, and then the other main engineering difference that Stacy can go more detail about is, in response to the direction of the Conservation Commission, we ended up doing, doing the calculations necessary to actually establish the floodplain elevations in this area. This is FEMA Flood Zone A, meaning that there's, there's just a general flood zone designation, not a specific elevation, but with the last two and a half weeks, Hills and Thomas has undertaken the task of, substantial task of actually doing those calculations, and Stacy can go into more about what that means.
So as Adam mentioned, we've undertaken some additional information which was submitted to the board.
Stacy, could you use the mic a little closer so the audience can hear?
Is this better?
Yes.
Thank you. We've undertaken revisions to the plans that I'll run through, and I'll briefly summarize the supplemental information we submitted as well, and I'm of course happy to answer any questions you may have. So the information that we've submitted to the planning board as supplemental information are the revised plans, which respond to initial comments from the board, the Conservation Commission, Matt BP, and the other comments. We've submitted a revised, updated aerial presentation exhibit, which is this board here, which shows the entirety of the project on one sheet, just for ease of review. We've prepared screening cross-section exhibits, which I'll go through in a bit. As Adam mentioned, we established the elevation of the 100-year floodplain, and although there's very de minimis increase in that elevation, we've designed compensatory flood storage. And then we also resummarized some of the more salient floodplain district special permit and site plan requirements. So in terms of the revised plans, we've doubled the distance from the solar panels to the town line to the north, so instead of the minimum 50-foot setback, it's a 100-foot setback along the top of the project. We've more than doubled the distance, as Adam mentioned, to Bay Road, so the minimum distance from a panel to the property line is 285 feet at this location. I'm sorry, 285 feet to Bay Road at this location, 150 feet to the property line, which far exceeds the 50-foot setback. However, the majority of this area here has a 300-foot setback to Bay Road as requested. We, and I think I discussed this at the last hearing, have finalized the relocation of the equipment area from behind this onsite building to the northwest portion of the property, which is as far as possible from residences. That location is 1,745 feet from the home at 19 Fairly Lane, and 17, which is located here, and 1,725 feet from the home at 222 Bay Road, located here. As I mentioned, we incorporated flood storage. The increase in, potential increase in flood volume, or flood elevation on the side was .005 inches, which is de minimis. We did create a compensatory flood storage to mitigate that flood volume loss on an incremental foot basis. We've done that by squaring off one of the edges of the bogs to create additional flood storage capacity in that location. We've eliminated the underground electric conduit installation within each block of panels, so it will now be strung to the racking at a minimum or above 10-foot height. This reduces the wetlands impact within the cranberry bogs. And then we have also added detailed information for screening vegetation that's proposed. So we're proposing over 600 trees and shrubs of varying species and sizes to provide screening from the abutters as well as from Bay Road. The screening incorporates feedback received from the board, the director, as well as certain abutters, including nurseries, the Pilillo property, and the property at 222 Bay Road. And two other minor changes in the final plans are updating the property line, as the board had noted based on the more recent assessors' information, and we also added gates at the site entrances. There's an, no, that's okay. There's an existing gate here that we'll be improving to be a vehicle access roller gate, and we'll be incorporating a gate at this access point as well. So in regard to the screening cross-sections, what we've submitted are views from the area that had been discussed with the board at the prior meetings. So each of these represents a view from a certain location. This top is from 222 Bay Road, which is located here. This is the view from the home. We've proposed screening, as you can see on this exhibit, in the lighter green, screening along this entire length. Vegetative screening along this entire length here, additional screening here, additional screening here, and then screening along here in two bands for the properties off Fairly. So in terms of cross-section views, what we show are the home, the existing vegetation, in this case, this vegetation is in the background, and then the proposed screening vegetation. So here's the access road, which is just off of our property. This is where we've discussed to implantings on the abutting property. We've proposed a certain amount of plantings to be planted at the height necessary to screen the project at day one. And then we've also proposed some smaller specimens, because oftentimes smaller specimens will grow faster over time, so we think with this mix, you'll get the benefit of immediate screening as well as the benefit of long-term foodwork and screening. And so what's shown on each of these cross-sections is the specimen height for what we're proposing to plant on day one, at the height to screen on day one, as well as specimens that will be shorter, and their anticipated height in five years. And then the line around the trees is their anticipated mature height, so that you can have a sense of what the screening will be over time as the project proceeds. So as you can, and here, you can see the cranberry bog, and then a view of the panels to scale in terms of what the viewing distance would be from each of these areas. So as you can see, for each of the cross-sections, we've incorporated plantings at a height, again, to screen on day one from the views. I'm happy to go through these in more detail if helpful, but for now, I'll leave it at that. In terms of the flood elevation, I've covered that we have met the criteria. There are two main criteria for the floodplain special district, floodplain district special permit. No work in floodway, which we are not working in a floodway, and no increase in flood elevation. And so we would argue that the increase is de minimis, however, we have also compensated on top of that to be safe. So I think we fully met those criteria. I also included in the latest letter kind of a briefer summary of the site plan approval requirements, much of it was related to what I just went through with regard to screening. We also detailed those requirements in our original applications. I'm happy to go through it, but thought now may be a good time to pause and pass it over to Adam, unless you have any other, any questions in detail.
With the screening plans, the cross-sections that you have there, I see a number of specific addresses listed where the plans developed in concert with those residents, or are they just examples?
These cross-sections are examples.
We have coordinated with a couple of the abutters in regards to their preferred screening. That would be 222, as well as further south, Blue View Nursery property.
Adam, could you speak closer to the microphone, please?
Sorry, we have coordinated with a couple of the abutters regarding the landscaping plan. That was the 222, as well as the landscaping, which we didn't do a cross-section for, but down near Blue View Nurseries. The others are representative examples to get a slice of what every, every house could expect to see along Bay Road, as well as on Fairly Lane.
We just got these plans, I think, today, so it makes it very difficult. The question I have is, has, is there a way of getting copies of these plans in some ways so that the public can get to see them?
Yes, we submitted three full-size copies and 30 copies of all of the materials that we submitted, for the director to choose to pass out to the public if desired. They're also posted on an FTP site that I had emailed, which is accessible by anyone that has that link, so that certainly can be provided as well.
Do you have that link, and can you make sure, can you publicize it again?
Yes, although I think the best way, I can coordinate with the director, because I don't have a way of getting it to the abutters.
And I just want to add that we do have these digitally, and tomorrow or Monday, we will have them up. There's a, if you go to the Planning and Economic Development, or actually, the Planning Board webpage, you can click on Fairland Farm, and we'll have these latest files posted up on there as well. And there's many copies in the back, so if you all would like to get them, we have, we have hard copies.
I think I asked this before, I just want to confirm the sighting of the landscaping, this is not on your properties, these are all on abutters' properties?
No, it's a mix, so the proposed landscaping, screening on the western side is entirely on our property. There's two bands proposed, which block views to the panels. And then, beginning to the south, it's slightly off property, or the abutters' request, and extends onto our property. We don't own this part over here, and so we can't obviously plant where they want to own our property. And then over here, it's on our property. Along here, it's on our property, including the screening at the entrance. And then beginning here, it goes off-site, because our property line is contiguous with the edge of the cranberry bog, and so there's no space for planting. So sheets on C. 5.1 begin the landscape plans.
C. 5. I'm looking at C. 3.2.
If you look at C. 5.1, that begins the landscape plans, 5.1, 5.2, 5.3.
Let me back up a step. I was looking at C. 3.2, and parallel to your property line, on your property, there's a dotted line, and I meant a dash line, and I can't tell what that is, I can't read it.
I'm sorry, where were you looking? I'm sorry, where were you looking?
I'm looking along the property line that faces Bay Road. In toward our property line, there's a dashed line.
That's the 100-year flood elevation.
So that's the end of it, or that's the beginning of it?
The 100-year flood elevation extends off-site, so it begins up at the top of the plan, comes all the way down. Generally, more or less parallels the property line, either just inside or just outside, continues down around the bogs, continues down to the south of the plan.
Adam, in one point, you said that there was an easement along that road, that property line?
I believe, Adam, correct me if I'm wrong, that this existing access room is, is off-site, is subject to an access easement here.
Okay, so there is no, is that true, in that area? You can't put that on your property, I have to put it on the Butters' property?
This road is not on our property in this area. Our property line is the edge of the bog.
Have you approached the property owners to discuss whether they're willing to allow you to landscape that property to qualify?
Yes, we have. This, the majority, or the majority of the off-site landscaping is on the Palillo sand gravel lot, and we have, they reviewed these plans, and these were developed in concert with them, and we have a deal with them to allow for an easement to plant these that we're currently evaluating. And with the Butters at 222 Bay Road, the plan there was, that we did, was based on a conversation I had with him, and so essentially, we're, what we proposed there, which is what, what he and I spoke about, we are essentially leaving it, you know, if he wants us to do that, we will do it. If he doesn't want us to do it, we won't do it.
Well, so the burdens are due to be able to provide landscaping, so I'm just wanting to find out what arrangements you're making with them.
Right, yeah, and I think in this case, you know, since really the only view that we're protecting right here at 222 is the view from 222, if the Butters does not want to, want us to put the screening there, then that's his decision.
So they don't want screening?
No, that's not what I said. They do want screening, and I have discussed that with him. But I think your question is if we have the, if we have official or easement or anything like that to do that there, and we don't, I'm just leaving that up to him at the end of the day, if he wants us to do it or not. Does that, I'm sorry, maybe I'm not answering your question.
Yeah, the approving process requires you to provide landscaping.
Right.
And so if you're supposed to be doing it on your property, and you can't, if you're actually going to do it on somebody else's property, which is your requirement, I'd like to see you have made arrangements with those property owners to satisfy them as to what's happening, what's not happening, and/or compensating them if you have to use their land because it's not yours to use.
Right, and so the discussion I had with the Butters at 222 was, he requested that we not put any plantings here, so that his view going out across the bogs was not impeded by those plantings. And, but he did request that we ground from here up to this point, because he has existing vegetation right here. And so he asked us to essentially fill in the understory of that existing vegetation. And so that's what we're showing on the plans.
And I'm not sure, I think I saw something, but again, it came in late, and I'm not sure if I read it. Is there some mechanisms where you're maintaining whatever authority you're going to?
Yes, there is, and before I get to that, actually, I should have mentioned it in my overview. I believe that the criteria as well in terms of the screening is to protect public views, and so we're proposing to protect this individual view as well, in addition to protecting the public view along Bay Road, because screening is not necessary here to protect a view shed from Bay Road. So just one distinction. In terms of the landscape maintenance plan, we did submit one, goes through in detail establishment of the plantings, how they should be maintained, pruned, watered, in what conditions they can be planted, and then monitoring thereafter.
And what arrangements would the Butters have to enforce that plan?
I think the Planting Board would have the ability to enforce that, because it's part of the approval documents for the project if it were approved.
It would be a condition, a special moment to maintain it?
Yes.
Do you mind if I go next?
I'm sorry.
We'll just pass it down the line, maybe is the smartest way to go about this. So I just had a question on the screening plan. I'm assuming the blue dotted line is the visual line?
On the cross-section view?
Yes.
Yes, so the blue dotted line shows the site line.
And are that homes to scale? Meaning that a home would be able to be screened from, let's say, their living room, but not their second-story bedroom?
Yes.
Okay.
So, well, I guess in terms of where the screening is, it's kind of from the first floor of the home.
Right.
Each home is, the lines show the home, or is it standard?
Okay. But if it were technically a two-story home, it's really screening kind of from the first floor down, if I'm reading the line correctly?
Correct.
Okay. Also, I did have a couple, just quick questions on that, the overall screening plan. Is there a reason why you're not screening almost all around the, is it Inceptor Site? Or the, where all the equipment's kind of, Inverter Site, sorry?
Oh, we are screening all around that.
And what, it's not like in an actual square, like one side is actually open?
You mean on the back side?
Yeah.
There are no residents, this is the existing solar facility, and that's surrounded by woods to the west and the north.
Okay. What about the home on number nine Fuller Drive or 152 Bay Road? Are those two parts separated, or is the existing vegetation enough?
The existing vegetation is enough. Nine Fuller Drive is located here, so you can see there's a significant buffer of existing wooded area, and then even from that, there's the bypass canal, which has about a 10-foot vegetative growth buffer on either side of it, and then across the cranberry bog to the panels. And then what was the other one you asked about?
152 Bay Road?
Oh, yes, so that has an even greater distance, so.
Because it looks like 167 is getting screened by, like, that L-shaped portion, but 152 is below it, even though 167 is further out, technically on the other side of Bay Road.
167, so I'm looking for a scale, I don't see one, but if that's 222. I mean, those are 1,000, you know, over 1,000 feet away from the panels, through a very, very significantly wooded buffer.
So is there a reason why you kind of chose like these two areas?
Those, these other ones? That was at the request?
Yep.
That was at the request of the Blue View Nursery.
Oh, okay, so those two spots are at the request of?
Yeah, these are not, these are not screening anything existing today. And that's the same for this midsection here.
Okay, one of Butters' requests, Nursery's request.
Just a follow-up question on the site line. That show, everybody else, this is an approximation, and it's first floor. You know, safe to assume that we're looking at a five-foot height or something of the like with where that site line's positioned on the house?
I think that's safe to assume, I mean, there's that much grade difference between buildings in the property as well.
Okay, just to give a perspective, yeah. And I may have asked this last time, but given that there's been some further modifications, current number of panels in this design and what is the revised megawatts projected for this latest revision?
Right, so the, the total, so maybe it was you and one other Planning Board member had asked last time about the number of panels, and you were correct, your assumption was correct. We have been going through a number of reengineering and optimization exercises, and when we weren't including these, the small array to the southwest, it was a little over eight megawatts, and when we were, when we did have that in there, it was roughly 8.6 megawatts. So I was incorrect in what I said last time, and you were both, you were looking at that correctly. So the current plan, after we redesigned everything and broke apart some of the arrays to essentially pack in as much as we possibly could to accommodate the greater setbacks off of Bay Road, we, even with that, we were actually able to bring back the capacity slightly to 8.7 megawatts.
Okay, 8.7 megawatts, and do we have a count on total number of panels?
We do, we certainly do, and I meant to have that ready for you. I can pull that up during the hearing here, get that to you.
Okay, please, thank you.
I just wanted to, from the Planning Board's perspective, react to the concern that Orrin had raised in terms of the security or the assurance that the, whether plantings are approved, if this project is approved, what assurances there are. The Planning Board would and does have the capability of requiring surety in terms of life expectancy maintenance. You know, I see a couple folks from Clock Street, there may be some, some debate as how effective we've been in the past, but nevertheless, we have an obligation to ensure that whatever plantings are, are put up, are in fact maintained and survived. So that's something that we would do internally.
Pass the mic down to the folks.
You're looking up the total number of panels?
Yes.
Okay. And do you have the number that it originally was with the 8.9 megawatts? Does that cover the questions, at least for the moment, from the board?
Two of the quick ones. We've gotten some materials from the neighbors. In particular, just recently, there was one, something from, I believe it was residents who responsible solar energy. I don't know if you've gotten access to that material, and I don't know, I think it might be helpful, at least from my perspective, and at some point, you could respond to their comments, not necessarily now, or just writing.
That's a perfect segue, actually, Adam's up next.
The other question I have is, I noted for everybody's benefit, we put this in the river up in the corner where there are no current residents. What's around that property, and is it something that somebody owns that can potentially be, where there could be other residents that might be affected by that? I don't know what that property is now.
To the west, it's the existing solar.
Well, we put the embers up in the northeast corner, northwest corner.
Yep, so to the west, it's the existing solar, right? To the north, it's the same cranberry bog complex. I would need to look at the assessors and see what is here, but the bypass canal is here, so there would not be anything immediately near that embers, as far as I can tell, but I can certainly look into that. I can't possibly build up all the way.
And do you know how that area is zoned?
I believe it's zoned the same, but I can't guarantee that without double-checking. That's my recollection from looking at the zoning now. And so, actually, sorry, just to clarify that question, if I may, are you looking for what the property is in the east end or just in northern? To the west, because to the west and northern, it's the existing solar facility.
I just, I know we put it there, it's far away from the current residence. It's as far away from the current residence as possible. I just wanted to make sure we weren't ignoring the possibility of somebody building anywhere close to that area, because it's the most problematic from what I understand.
Yeah, this is all, so this aerial doesn't show the current condition, because it hasn't been updated yet on what's available, but you can see the scarified land here as well as here. Those are the existing solar facilities, so from basically here, this end of my ruler to my finger, is all existing solar, right? So there would be nothing able to be built outside.
Thank you.
Yep.
Paul, this wasn't distributed?
Yeah, it's in your, it's in your.
So in responding to your question about the documents submitted by the Butters, and the Butters' attorney also submitted some documents to the Planning Board as well as the Attorney General, and the letter, and I, we just cut it out this evening, because we were responding to those documents that were put forward, 26. So in the letter that I just put in front of you, we do our best to address the Butters' comments section by section, and, and also the attorney's letter to the Planning Board as well as the Attorney General. And I would say that in general, you know, as Stacy has just gone through, we have done everything that we can do to try to mitigate the concerns raised by the Butters. We have moved the embers and the storage containers as far as possibly, as far as we possibly can. They're at least 1,700 feet from the nearest residence. We have increased the setbacks to the greatest extent possible while maintaining the economic viability of the project. And, you know, despite this, unfortunately, I think, especially at the last hearing, things kind of devolved to the point where the Butters and their attorney were, in the absence of credible information, were resorting to the use of misleading, obscure, entirely speculative and unrelated information, as well as making false statements, making false allegations against our company, and even threatening physical violence against me personally in apparent scare tactic. This irresponsible behavior has no place in society.
Hold on, hold on. He is stating a position as an advocate that you may or may not agree with, or comments made by the Butters, that I'm sure they haven't agreed with. I'm going to let him finish until I hear something that is not representative of what took place last, at our last meeting, because there, there were comments made that could have been taken as a threat, to be quite candid. But in any case, I'll let him present his, his presentation, and obviously, all that folks in the audience respond when their time comes.
And this is, you don't need to take my word for it, this is recorded on video and documented in the, in the letter I presented to you. And I take no pleasure in talking about this, I think it's just, I have to, I'd be doing myself a disservice and our company a disservice if I didn't defend us. And, you know, continuing with that pattern of irresponsible behavior, the Butters and their attorney once again submitted entirely speculative, entirely speculative information in the document that you received, and that was submitted to the Attorney General. That letter from the attorney included blatantly false information. We have provided responses to all of this in the letter that you have before you, and it's our request that, given that we have provided the board with, with third-party verifying information regarding potential, or regarding the Butters' concerns about health, safety, and, and impacts to the community, we, you know, in response to those concerns, we have provided documentation from multiple third parties, including the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection and the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources, that actually did verify and incredible studies which support what we're putting in front of you and entirely disavow what the Butters are claiming. front of you and entirely disavow what the abutters are claiming. Therefore, in order to prevent the project from further undue delay and to avoid further unproductive use of the planning board's time, we would respectfully request that unless there's some specific incredible information brought forth by the abutters, that we no longer continue the discussion of those items. Finally, the letter sent to you today by Dane Torby, Charles and Lorraine, our attorney Darren, as well as Patrick Gallagher from Dane Torby, makes two important points. First, the zoning amendment that was passed at the January special town meeting is in effect, which is agreed with, that fact is agreed with by the town attorney. And second, there is no legal basis that would allow the planning board to impose upon the project some sort of financial surety to protect a view from private property, and this is further backed up in the, in the letter from Dane Torby. Despite all of this, and in the last attempt to bridge the divide with the abutters, Nexon is willing to offer a bond similar to that that was done on Clap Street with the same terms and conditions, although for the avoidance of doubt, we are willing to make this bond in the amount of $250,000 compared to the $100,000 bond that was placed on Clap Street. And there is no public record that we were able to find of how that $100,000 was derived, but it was for 10 abutters. In this case, we have proposed 11 abutters with direct views of the bonds that this would apply to. However, we offer this only on the condition that the project is in no way appealed in any venue. And because it is not possible or legal for the planning board to put this requirement on the project to begin with, we believe that that position is reasonable and viable. Ultimately, we believe the decision before you is straightforward. Nexon has provided multiple third-party reports that I mentioned, demonstrating that the project would be a safe and responsible fixture in the community, and that the abutters' claims regarding health, safety, and environmental risks are unfounded. These documents were generated for the purpose of helping local boards make decisions in exactly these types of situations. We urge you to rely on this credible information when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to break the rule I stated originally that we're going to ask people to line up and give each person three minutes. I see, and forgive me, counsel, I've forgotten your firm name, but to the extent that I assume you represent more than one person in the audience, it might be useful to give you a little more than three minutes to present your, your position and that of the abutters. And also, in terms of going forward, I'm not going to have the applicant respond to questions individually. After you've used your three minutes, I'm going to ask the applicant to keep track of what questions were asked. I don't want to get into debate, question by question. I'll ask the applicant to respond to your three minutes worth of questions on their own time. Thank you, counsel.
Thank you very much. My name is Matthew Gaines, an attorney with the law firm Marcus Reba and Brooks, and I represent approximately 20 abutters in terms of the number of homes, so probably about 40 residents in the area. You obviously should have received the 17-page letter from the abutters, the three-page letter from my office directed to the planning board with some concerns about the special permit and safety criteria, as well as a letter that we did send to the attorney general on his only bylaw amendment. I wasn't going to start this way, but one of the comments that the gentleman from Nexon just made really caught me off guard, and I'm sorry to hear that he thinks that the planning board's hearing from the abutters tonight in the past is, is not a good use of the planning board's time. He just said that, and I was shocked to hear him say that. I mean, obviously, that's what you're here for, to hear from the abutters any of their concerns. I want to just quickly touch on the bylaw amendment. I realize that to some extent, obviously, the horse is off the barn from your eyes on that, passed here or passed at the town meeting, and it's with the attorney general's office. But the one question I actually have for the planning board, if they can maybe answer before I go too much further, is why the abutters were not notified of the amendment in the hearing that the planning board had on it as required by Section 12.2 of the bylaw, which states that notices of the planning board's hearing on a bylaw amendment shall be mailed to all the abutters of land subject to the amendment, when we know this is the only place in town that is subject to the amendment that was towards the, the end of the article there. So I'm just curious if there's a reason why the notices were not mailed to the abutters?
I'm sorry, I can't answer that. I don't, I don't know, and I, although I can't think of another cranberry bog in town, I can't sit here and say there are no other potential cranberry bogs where this would potentially be applicable.
Sure. And I watched the YouTube video of what you were hearing from December, and that question was brought up, and the answer was no, there are no other active bogs in town, so this is the only land that would be subject to it. With that being said, I guess I'll move on to my other comments. Talking about the special permit criteria, the applicant seems to be glossing over the fact that the other requirements regarding special permits in Article 10 of your bylaw apply. They seem to only be talking about the, the requirements in the floodplain special permit, but the requirements in Article 10 do apply here. And as you know, it states that the advantages of the proposal must outweigh by far any detrimental effects. I would argue that based on the information presented so far, that is simply not the case. However, if you disagree with that assertion, at the very least, you have to answer that question as saying that you don't have enough information to know whether or not the advantages far outweigh, given all the conflicting information you've received from the residents versus the applicant. There's an easy way to solve that problem, a peer review. And one of the members of the planning board actually raised that at the last meeting. I don't know the one on February 5th. I don't know whether there's been any other discussions about that, but it certainly seems like a good idea in this situation. This would be one of the largest solar installations in Massachusetts at 8.7 megawatts. This is unprecedented, not just in Norton, but in the entire state, given the fact that all other current large installations, or almost all of them, are not in residential areas. You can go on Google Earth, you can look it up, they're all, you know, quarters of miles or more from neighborhoods, they're nowhere near a neighborhood, they're in the middle of the woods. There was one down in Barnstable near the airport. A lot of them are in landfills of this size. None of them are in residential areas from what we can tell. You know, and given that fact that, you know, the peer review would really help the situation, you received six new pieces of information tonight from what I could gather, based on what was on the table in the back, maybe there's more, because you received some handouts. This is a very technical thing, you know, talking about EMF and all the other issues, decibels versus hertz. You need a peer reviewer to dig down on these issues. It's really incumbent on you to do your due diligence and just take the applicant's word for it, that everything's going to be okay. I understand how you would really even look these residents in the face and tell them that you're looking out for them without doing a peer review of a project of this magnitude. As for the size, as I said, it's unprecedented. While they certainly have scaled back the project to some extent, they could probably do it more, and while the applicant will tell you that the, the economics of the project don't allow that, that's because, that's probably based on the current purchase price. If he were to renegotiate the purchase price with the seller, or whatever the other land cost might be that he can negotiate, then he could scale the person, the project back. I understand that there's eventually a floor for both sides, that the seller will only go so low, and the applicant would only go so low, but I highly doubt that we are there yet. This happens all the time. Our office represents developers, they put out a proposal for, you know, build a 100-unit apartment building, maybe their land purchase price is $2 million, and the town only moves it through 75 units, so they go back to the seller and say, all right, I will pay you 1.5 or 1.75. And the seller might take that, because it's still barely getting zero. We don't know if they fit their bottom line on that. This project, I am sure, can be scaled back further. Finally, conditions. In the event that the board actually finds the advantages of this project outweigh by far the detrimental effects, the board is obligated to impose conditions to minimize the detrimental effects and protect the neighborhood. This is not discretionary. This is required for Section 10.10 of the bylaw. We, I don't know if the board has even really given any thought to some conditions, hopefully they have at this point, but I do have some suggestions. As far as property values, that's great to hear that they're going to throw $250 in a bond. We all know that's not going to be nearly enough for the property value these folks are going to lose. I had another idea. The pilot payments, the $200,000 that go into the town every year, why don't we take that money, put it in an escrow account? The town doesn't get to touch it if their property values go down. That would really tell you whose side the town is on. You're on the side of the town making money or protecting the residents. We put that money in escrow for a certain number of years, if it turns out the values don't go down, then the town can get that money, but if they do go down, then the residents should get it. That's one condition. Soil monitoring, water monitoring, you could certainly impose that as a condition. EMF testing, decibels and hertz testing. I was looking at the Clap Street decision for some ideas as well. And in that decision, there is actually a condition that normal operations of solar arrays shall not generate noise discernible to the abutters, not even discernible to the abutters. So clearly, there's an precedent for imposing that condition, you could do that here as well. Screening, again, according to the Clap decision, approves that landscaping shall be in place before any equipment is installed, and once the panels are installed, if they can be seen by the abutters, the developer shall come back to the planning board and come up with solutions prior to the generation of power. So they have to do all their screening first, then come back to you, then put the panels in, then come back to you, and if they still can see the panels, they can't fire up the grid until they fix that problem. That was in the Clap decision, the Clap Street decision, it should be in here, you have precedent for this. The Clap Street approval also required a 30% electricity rate reduction to the abutters, maybe that's something else that we can negotiate here as well. The Clap Street decision said no glare from the solar panels to residents would be greater than 30% of the glare factor. Finally, just again, since I keep referring to the Clap Street decision, as you know, that was required for a solar installation that's a mere fraction of what they are doing here. I believe it's 650 kilowatts compared to 8.7 megawatts. If it was required for such a small project over in Clap Street, clearly those requirements should be imposed here. And finally, I guess on enforcement, the chairman did mention this, I did speak to at least one resident over in Clap Street, and they said they're having a real hard time with getting their conditions enforced. So please, if you're going to approve this, which God, I hope you don't, and you shouldn't, there's got to be some teeth in here to actually hold their feet to the fire. We know how, how it's going to go, you know. But that's it, I may take any questions and turn it over to the other folks.
I'm going to ask if there are any questions or comments, counsel, from board members, and then I'll ask the applicant to respond.
Mr. Gaines, I just had a question for you. In, in your letter of November 20th, February 26th, the last page, you said the cyclone approval provision in bylaw Article 15 makes reference to protecting against diminution of property value directly to what you referred to.
Sure. I have the language right here. One second. It's Article 15. Did I say the specific section? I don't have my letter.
No, you didn't.
Okay. Article 15, I was actually looking at it before I came up here.
Counsel, I'm finding it specific.
Sure, no, I have it. It's under the landscaping section. It's under, I believe, 15D2, where it says appropriate transition and screening shall protect against diminution of property values due to adjacent commercial construction or a change in incompatible land uses. It's a certain incompatible land use.
So it goes to the landscaping department?
Correct, to protect against the diminution of property value.
And just as a note, as I'm sure you're aware, I don't really want to debate the issue with you, but the question you raised about the notice, you're, you're aware that the notice provision is, is no longer applicable when there's a, when it serves the, let's see, when it serves the?
The generalization, generalized.
Yeah.
Sure, no, I, I'm aware of that.
I'm not going to debate that with you, just so, there is, there is a provision.
Yes.
It affects generally.
Correct.
It affects only just yourself.
Correct.
That requirement is the.
Correct, and the debate is obviously whether or not this gentleman wants to.
That, you didn't mention that.
Other questions from board members? I'll turn it over to the applicant to respond.
Yeah, responding to this project being unprecedented, it is not, this is just another, at least in terms of size, another example of the attorney making baseless claims, which he did at the last hearing when he alleged that Nexon Energy was responsible for the amendment pertaining, or changing it from a special permit requirement to cyclone review. And also, again, he just claimed that there are no other cranberry bogs in town that would be applicable under this bylaw, which is not true. I've provided you with the parcel numbers, the size of those cranberry bogs, and I don't know what YouTube video the attorney was watching, but I was at the planning board hearing, and, and actually, one of the board members asked that exact same question. Sorry, Orin, I can't see your last name, but Orin asked that question specifically pertaining to whether or not this would be considered spot zoning, and it was replied to him that there are multiple cranberry bogs in town, and that satisfied the question. So again, I think we're just seeing more examples of, you know, baseless information being put forward in the attempt to delay the project and sway your opinion. Pat, did you want to add anything else in this regard?
Just a few notes from questions that I wrote down as well. I do want to reiterate that we are not asking the planning board to take our word, although we are providing documented information, we've provided third-party information from various sources, including from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts regarding the concerns that have been weighed. So we're certainly not expecting that you only base your decision on information generated by our team. I guess that's the only contrast.
And I just want to make a point as well, that the board does not need me to remind the board of this fact, but the Clap Street permit was rather under a different regime. The, there has been a bylaw amendment, since we are not here for a special permit for solar, right? We are here for a special permit for floodplain district, and therefore, the conditions that were part of that special permit really are applicable insofar as what we are here for tonight. Thank you.
All right, just a couple more clarifications. The, the attorney also alleged that I stated that it wasn't a good use of the board's time to hear from the abutters. That's not what I intended. What I intended to say was it's not a good use of the board's time to continue to debate these issues for which the abutters and the abutters attorney are only providing speculative and speculative information, not based in anything credible. I, the, the other highly speculative item that the attorney raised was that the project could somehow be shrunk in size if we were able to renegotiate a deal with the landowner or landowners, and, and I think that, again, has no basis in reality, and it's not something that should have any bearing in your decision whatsoever. Finally, I would note that the attorney continues to state that this project does not by far, the benefits do not by far outweigh the potential negatives, given that we have sufficiently addressed all of the potential negatives that have been raised by the abutters. I, I do not see there being any negatives here, and at the same time, what the attorney is not doing is highlighting any of the positive benefits of the project. Currently, the property pays roughly $7,000 per year in property tax. With, under the pilot agreement, the property would pay $207,000 in property tax to the town. That's 30 times the amount of property tax that it's currently paying. Over the life of the project, that amounts to $4 million paid to the town. In addition, which would not be received if the project is not deployed. Further, the project would generate renewable electricity, which is not only good for the town, but good for the community and the Commonwealth as a whole. And finally, this project, although you'll, I'm sure again, hear more claims from the abutters, I know that this isn't true, but in fact, it is true, that the dual-use program is meant to maintain the viability of farmland, which is exactly what it's doing in this case. If, you know, given the nature of the cranberry industry right now, it's uncertain what will happen to these cranberry bogs if this project does not happen. So we are preserving farmland, we are providing substantial additional revenue to the town, and at the same time, we are providing a significant source of renewable electricity.
Thank you. I'm going to open up to the floor. Anyone who wants to address or ask questions can line up at the mic. I will, limited to three minutes, ask all your questions. I will, limited to three minutes, ask all your questions, one by rapid fire, because I'm not going to have the applicant respond to questions individually that respond after you've had used your three minutes. Mr. Coglian, are you on?
Hold my mic close, you're on. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Just for the record, I object to the three-minute limitation.
I'm sorry, but...
I really think that with...
For the record, you're using your time. If you want to object, that's your preference.
You're saying I object to this. This is a big project. We shouldn't be doing it this way. I have three questions, and I want to point something out. Number one, I'd like to know, what is the status of the National Grid Interconnection Agreement with Nexon? Number two, has Nexon applied for a predetermination letter from the D O E R? Number three, if there are other bogs that could be potentially used by this project, have they approached any other of these bog owners? And if not, why not? Adam stated in the past that he has with Nexon done a three-megawatt project in Middleboro. That's the biggest project that they've done. My understanding, in speaking with experts in this area, that projects in Massachusetts range from 100 kilowatts to seven megawatts in Massachusetts. That may, most projects in Massachusetts, however, are in the one-to-two-megawatt size. That makes this project four to eight times bigger than most of the projects in Massachusetts. Now, you should be asking yourself, what does that mean for this experiment? This is a 30-year experiment, the first of its kind in Massachusetts, involving dual use. And we're going to make it four to eight times what you typically see for projects in Mass. There's something wrong with that. I've already mentioned here before that this project does not go in the spirit of the regulation that may allow, meaning that there is no farmer in this project. The farmer is gone. Nexon has no experience with farming. Now, that being said, and I do oppose this project, at a minimum, the board should be reducing this project. It should be reducing it to a size similar to the existing solar farm of three megawatts. Two, the financing, the financial problems of this project involve an interconnection charge. That charge can be covered with a sized project of 4.5 megawatts. That would cover a $1 million interconnection charge. The only other issue outstanding is the cost of the land. I believe Adam is capable and competent enough to renegotiate that if that's necessary. If this project can only be done at eight megawatts, then it doesn't belong in this site anymore. Regarding this area here, this area here, this is not going to work out. This is not going to be financially feasible in this area. No, nor are the crops going to work in this area. You cannot get helicopters in there with these panels going. These night roads are too small to put a truck through. That means this is either going to cost too much money to continue to do production there, or it's just not going to happen, and the crops will fail. So all in all, I really think that this is the wrong way to go about this. This is a 30-year project. This is moving much too fast. Personally, I think the project should be rejected, not only for all the reasons that I gave you.
Mr. Coglian, your time is up. Only to give people, other people, a chance.
(laughter)
You're not in line. If one of those people behind him wants to step aside... No, no, no. There were four people. There were four people. Mr. Coglian, your time is up. Thank you. If you want to get back in line, that's fine. If you want to take the place of one of those four people who stand behind you. Again, the intent of putting the time limit is so that people could ask questions, make their comments.
This is disgraceful.
It may be, but never was.
It is. Where are your names? Where are your names? We got, you guys just stick by the law.
I'm going to say this one more time. We can just close this hearing now. I have not, we have not limited anyone's opportunity to speak, and I'm not going to do it now, but I'm also not going to listen to half an hour of people's opinion. And I'm not suggesting that's what you've just provided, but I'm trying to give everyone an opportunity to speak. And if I haven't accomplished that by the end of the night, we'll correct it. But for the moment, it's three minutes. I gave counsel all the time he needed. I'll ask you, Mr. Coglian, if there are other comments you want to make, then get back in line, and I will recognize the next four people.
Nexon got 38 minutes.
I'm sorry. I think I made myself clear. Please do. Yes, sir.
Do you want Adam to respond?
Well, I'm sorry, yes. The applicant can respond to what he heard from Mr. Coglian.
I'm happy to take notes and respond all at once now.
I'm sorry.
I'm happy to respond. I think you said we could also just respond all at once at the end. I'm happy to...
No, I meant to say that rather than have you ask the question, respond to that, and then go on to another question, within those three minutes, respond to whatever you heard from that particular speaker, and then we'll do it again for the next speaker.
Okay. Quickly responding to Mr. Coglian's comments, we are, actually, just today, received our interconnection agreement from National Grid, which is the final step in the interconnection process. We have submitted for a predetermination application, and we had a site visit just last week with the Department of Agriculture and the Cleat Energy Extension, and so the results from that are pending. And Mr. Coglian stated that the largest project in Massachusetts is seven megawatts. There's a lot of confusion that arises when we start talking about megawatts AC versus megawatts DC. And actually, I'm aware of two projects that exceed 12 megawatts DC in size currently, and those, based on the SREC, based on the SREC program, which was the previous, the solar incentive program, those projects tend to be divided but co-located. So in terms of a co-located, single cohesive project, I know of at least two that are at 12 megawatts in size or more. And Mr. Coglian also brought up the statement that he doesn't think farming the northern portion of the property will be economically viable. That's just not the case, based on the research we've done with the current bog manager. We do not need to use helicopters to make it a viable process, nor do we want to, given that there will often be solar panels there that could be greatly impacted by the use of helicopters. So I'm happy to go into more detail another time, or now, if you want, about our actual farm management plans. But unless you want that, I'll leave it to say that we have researched it with the person that will be responsible for managing the bog, and it is entirely viable.
Adam, can you tell me where those 12-megawatt ones are?
Yes.
If you know offhand, please. If not, you can always let us know in writing later. I'm just curious where they're located.
Yeah, they're concentrated in central Massachusetts. I know one is just south of Ware, and the other project is around Amherst. But I will definitely follow up in writing with those project.
Okay, thank you.
And I also have a final panel count, whenever you're ready for that. Okay.
There is also a base total project that's not even a 11-megawatt.
11-megawatts is what Stacy said was recently permitted in Carver. Is that a single project, or is that a couple co-located? Or, well, it's a single co-located project, yes. So...
Will you use the panel?
You mentioned Ware, Amherst, and Carver. Are those all three located in residential areas?
The, they're residential agricultural, yes, all of them.
There's no residential slash agricultural?
Yes. And the previous panel count was 24,050. The current panel count is 23,625.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Could you just identify yourself?
Joel Johnson, 208 Bay Road. I have a couple. One comment on the speculative property values. I think if you use a common sense rule here, if you were to, anybody up here, if you were to walk in a house, and there's power lines in the back, solar farm, I think everybody would agree, you're not going to pay the same price, right? You're either going to walk away, or you're only going to buy it if you get a deal. So I don't agree that those comments that were being speculative here. I think for most of us, this is a huge number. I know you guys just threw up $150,000, but I look to lose $100,000 in equity. For me, in my family, that takes roughly eight to 10 years to recover from. So I know you guys mentioned, like, you know, maybe if we sell our homes, we get some money, but like, what if we got to send our kids to school, and we need the equity in our homes? Like, you guys, you know, provide that for us? You know, this is a huge economic impact to most of us here. I spent 10 years trying to earn enough equity to move into my house, and now you're basically saying, oh, break that all out. You know, I don't think there's a town that's very fair here. Let me see what else. So I do have some specific questions on the construction site. I live right on the, what I believe is the construction entrance. Is that where you guys are going? There's a 208 location there? Yeah, so if you look at that road, there's actually a property building right here, I have a pool right here. So my pool is probably, I don't know what the distance there, maybe 200 feet from that road right there, which is cutting out for like, small pickup trucks. So I'm curious, you know, how long the construction project is, how many trucks you're bringing back there, what the weight is, how long you're going to be doing that for, how you're going to wet the sand to make sure, are you going to cover it with a pool practice? It's three to four inches of concrete right there. When I'm standing on it right now, and a pickup truck drives by, I can feel the concrete vibrating. So, you know, that road is not a major construction entrance. If you bring in 21,000 panels with big trucks for a long period of time, for me, that's going to cause a huge problem. I'd mention, if anybody up here has a pool, if you have sand in the pool, that's all sand back there, just going to blow in my yard, it's going to blow my pool. This really isn't a place to do construction. You know, I know I only have three minutes here, but I'll try to... So these aren't speculative. These are actual facts here. So if you say I'm speculative, I think you're wrong. You're crushing residents' home values. $100,000, I just mentioned, that's very detrimental to the community. This is socially undesirable. My kids play in the back, and they play on these trees. So now I'm going to have to tell them, you can't go back there, kids, there's power lines back there. This is, the ones we've done to this town are much smaller. This is way bigger, and we haven't got the other two right. I've gone by the one on Hill Street, I think, I'm not sure how long that's been in, but I can hear the noise over there as well. This is a $20 million project. I think Adam said that they've never done it before. They grew some potatoes in UMass, and they think this is going to work. So why would we want to risk doing a pilot project here that could potentially be a small?
I'm sorry, but you're...
I think lastly, if you think, if Adam had just walked away from this, I think they sent the presidents of the state, and we should walk away with it, too. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'll just respond. I think I haven't responded to the property value issue specifically. I'll just do that once now, and we'll not respond on it again. But in the letter, the responses to the abutters that I provided to you, there's documentation. I know Director Deucey researched if there are any negative impacts to property values in the town of Norton for these existing solar projects, and the town assessor looked at that, and there were not. It also turned up in that research, was a very good study done by a common resident, which is an accounting and financial firm, and they did a very robust study. And I'm not sure, Mr. Deucey, if you surveyed that, why they're not, but it actually, they took a sample of 15 homes that actually sold after a solar project was installed adjacent to that property. And some of those homes were 83 feet from the nearest panel, so not the lot line. The actual panel itself was as close as 83 feet to the house. And what that study showed was that there was, so they assessed the 15 homes that sold after the projects were installed, compared it to 60 similar homes that sold during the same timeframe, and what the study showed was that there was no detrimental impact to property values. In fact, on average, the homes near the solar panel projects sold for slightly higher than the controlled homes. So I'm going to leave it at that for the property value. In regards to power lines, there will not be power lines. I know that was another issue raised in the abutters' letter. Power lines are, at least as we typically think of them, are high voltage power lines. Everything on site will be underground up until the point where it reaches the inverters, and only at that point, from the inverters back to the end of the fairway, will there be overhead wiring, which is at 12.8 kilovolts, which is the same voltage and size as all of the existing distribution network in the neighborhood already. So there will be nothing in terms of power lines that is not already in the neighborhood. And in regards to the abutters' pool, I understand that concern, and I think that's a very reasonable request to have, given that there will be significant construction traffic over here. So I'm happy to work with you, sir, to make sure that if there is any damage caused here for, we will mitigate that. And we can do that offline, or wherever you want to do it.
Joel, can I add one question on that? Adam, the reference third-party report, was that the one done in Indiana and Illinois? Is that the one that I read?
Yes.
Okay, so not located in the northeast, but we're talking basically in the northwest, like, the Midwest. Okay. Just want to make sure I didn't miss anything, and it wasn't a report that was more, I'll say, geologically, you know, like, you know, referenced closer to home. So just want to make sure I didn't miss anything. There's been a lot of information. I'm just trying to make sure I'm on the same page.
No, that is the one that is by far the most comprehensive study I've seen on it. Like I said earlier, there's very limited information on that topic, and that's the best study I've seen to date.
Good evening, everyone. Scott Bacon, 208 Bay Road. I just want to start off real quickly to make a correction that was read earlier about the 222 Bay Road. There's actually a letter that was provided up there tonight that was written by Ryan Sherman, who owns 222 Bay Road, and Dave Wardley, who may be speaking on this as well. It says, "We respectfully ask you as a board member and the fellow residents to consider, if this proposal were to move forward, which again, we hope it does not, to require proof that complete visual screening is possible and can be completed without the use of abutters' properties." I just want to make a clarification, because I know Mr. Seaton over there did ask about it, and I think that kind of puts some positions that I personally have done here tonight. I also wanted to start off and just mention that I had reached out to the Cranberry Station in WUMass to get some information on bogs. And I know that that may pertain more to the Conservation Association, but I think it also pertains to the plan and our requests that I'd like to make that I've already made before. The woman there named Hillary talked about the bowl shape that they have in their Cranberry bog, that the depth of the bowl, 30 feet down, is what's now confining layers that maintains the water level. And then towards the edges, it bulges up. And I asked her a question of, okay, what about putting pilings through that, down through that layer? What would you do with groundwater as well? Is it even organic, or just raised up to the levels of anything? Wouldn't allow any kind of transmissions of fluids between that? And she says, yeah, that's a very valid comment. And I don't even know the answer, but I was like, would it be a fair request, in her opinion, to say, hey, why don't we do water testing in certain areas across and around the bog to identify what it looks like beforehand, and then let's do it after, and let's do it every 90 days for the first two years? This takes everyone's opinion out of it. And if you can just say, hey, let's look at the data, and just sort of address it, but if it's not agreed to that this kind of test will be done, we're never going to have information. If this gets repeated in scale, it leaves us like a best case for this engineering marvel in the future, where you'd have no information and no data to support what's real and what's not. And everyone's opinion that's been shared, whether it's valid or not, in the past days, but it would be put to rest. No one needs to share that opinion. In terms of this resident study, I did a Google analysis. If you Google many, many things on that whole topic, the first 10 results always went up as the same. Four of the 10 results are all that same report. It was paid for by a solar company, and it was repeated many, many times, all in that contest. So we talked about bias and everything else, and something that came up through a Google search, no one spent money on it, no one did expensive, you know, testing, or hired an education program to go and do it. So I think it's a little loose, also not in the region. So in addition to some of the other tests, I think we should be doing water testing. I provided a letter earlier today, a little bit of a draft report, while you have it, and then I'd be glad to make sure everyone sees it. I also think we should do sound level testing, as well as the spectrum, to understand what kind of hum, beep, buzz is it. That's what I'm talking about, is it going to be there? Let's just measure it, and then think what to call it after. I also think that for me, enough testing, like those results, will be pushed to the town hall when they're done. In terms of the footings there, sorry, the inverter location, we talked about screening. I'll make my last comment. We talked about screening, and that's a visual barrier. When you put vegetation around a sound device, that's going to go away. It can dampen it and whatnot, but I'd like to ask, what's the damping factor of armor ratings, or whatever you propose there? Because if there is a sound issue there... there, the plastic can do anything.
Thank you.
Paul, is Scott's letter in the second, or did you...
I, I, yeah, I was just... I'll just add slightly to that, that the Co-Resnick study was something that was paid for, um, and it was, uh, a highly trained group of real estate and, um, accounting professionals that did it. So, it, it, uh, that, I, that study, I think, does have a lot of validity. Um, and, and I think, um, for the most part, the responses that I've already submitted today address, uh, the other items that the abutter raised.
Joe, can...
Adam?
Yeah?
The abutter raised the question about water testing and that kind of thing. Is that something that you would be open to as the company in charge of the project?
I, I think if there wasn't an overwhelming amount of evidence that demonstrated that it's not a problem, we would be willing to engage in it, but I'm hesitant to engage in something that there's no basis for. There's no, there's no, that there's no basis, that, that, there's not, if somebody provides incredible evidence showing that there, that something may leach into the groundwater, we would consider it, but someone is...
Excuse me. You have an opportunity to, to make your call. Thank you. Yes, sir.
How you doing? I'm, uh, Joe Miller from 551 Bay Road. We're one of the abutters, but we're, uh, we're in Easton. So, one of the things I wanted to have, one of the things I wanted to ask is that if there's gonna be money set aside, that I think the Easton homes that are viewing directly into the Cranberry Bog should probably be included in that, in not excluded, because we're not from Norton. And the other thing is, is the Dartmouth, um, planning board member made a fantastic point when they rejected the plan, that this program was set up to help Cranberry Bog's farmers, the guys who have been doing this for their life. And this, this program is not doing that. This is all about money. So, they're buying the land, they're not helping the Cranberry Bog as far as a farmer. They're helping them money-wise, but they're not helping them as a farmer, and that's one of the reasons why she rejected. I think that's a very important point. Another thing is, and I might show up this as you guys of the conservation, but are we gonna monitor how many barrels of cranberries have gone out before this program, and how many will have to go out afterwards as a result of it? Because I'm told by a fellow engineer that works in this field, that it's pretty hard to grow cranberries, uh, once they put the solar farms in. They can grow the vines, but not the cranberries. So, I think that's a really important note to, to make them, um, do that. The other question is, how long is it gonna take them to install these, um, panels? And if they're driving roads into the ground, are we gonna be listening to that all day long for six months or a year? Which, if you were sitting on your back deck, you would not enjoy that either. So, I think we need to know how long that's gonna take, and we're gonna be hearing that eight hours a day. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you wanna respond?
I'll just respond to a couple items here. Uh, in regards to the process going on in Dartmouth, um, again, I would point out that that is actually a, a process to amend, that the zoning bylaw is not a process regarding a specific solar project. And, um, that was brought up in the abutters' letter and framed as, you know, Nexon being run out of town for engaging in nefarious activity and not wanting to help farmers and just steal a bunch of money from everybody. Um, in reality, that process is ongoing, and in the letter before you, there's a more recent article that was not included in the abutters', um, letter, uh, which, um, is, is more, uh, just more direct quotes from the, the planning board, as they continue to consider, um, uh, the dual-use concept in Dartmouth. Um, in regards to, I think we, you know, we talked about this all before, um, the current owner of the bog, Fred Boddy, he's not a farmer by, by trade. Um, and the actual farmers are the people that manage the bogs for him on a day-to-day basis, who will continue to be employed by Nexon. Um, the, uh, the MDR, um, the, the, the gentleman from Easton also brought up, uh, whether or not there'll be any, um, requirements for yield, um, to, to be reported to the town. That is a requirement of dual-use program, as we've talked about before. We have to report those yields to the Department of Agriculture. Um, and actually, um, his assertion that cranberries do not grow, um, with shading, only the vines grow is again entirely false. One thing, um, that we've, that has, um, that we've actually gained a lot more knowledge about through the process of working through a predetermination request with, um, the MDR, again, with UMass Cranberry Station, is that cranberries are actually historically evolved as an understory plant, meaning that they're meant to be in the shade. And, uh, the reports that we've collected that were provided to us by, um, by the Cranberry Station demonstrate that the cranberry, uh, is able to go through its entire photosynthetic process with only 35% of the available light. And as you recall, the requirement of the dual-use program is to, um, create no more than 50% shading on the bogs, which is what we're doing. So, based on the research available to us, there will likely be no impact on the photosynthetic process or yield of the cranberry.
I have a question.
Yes?
Is there data prove that barrel production has gone up or not, level with 12,000 gallons of cranberry?
Because this is a new program, and there are not, uh, any of these projects out there, we do not have that data. Um, the data that we do have was just, uh, was based on experimental research to, to figure out how yields are affected, um, based on shading and nutrients and other factors. So, that's where the numbers come from. They just artificially shaded cranberry bogs to certain percentages, and...
Is it a real experiment?
Yes.
Where?
Um, I have to look back at that. Um, it's, uh, the, the report itself was provided to me by the UMass Cranberry Research Station. Um, so, I have the report, and I can, uh, follow up with where the actual study was conducted.
Sorry, I can't hear it. Um, just to, Paul, the abutter had asked about the approximate construction timeline for the installation of all of the panels. If you could speak to that?
Right. Uh, and that's, this is something that's come up before as well. It'll be expected to be, uh, five to six months.
And are you gonna pile drive into how you're gonna install them, I guess is another question? What type of vibration? How you gonna do it? Is there gonna be noise impact? So, for those five or six months, could you give us an idea of what the construction would be like?
Yeah, the, the construction timeframe of five to six months is for the, the construction of the entire project. Uh, so, the actual pile driving, I would estimate, would be complete within two months. Um, and that's, uh, that's a vibratory pile driver or hydraulic screws, uh, the, which is part of our plans. Uh, hydraulic screws is more of an attachment to an excavator using a hydraulic screw head. It's essentially a large screwdriver. Um, and so, the noise from that, um, is, is, uh, not very much at all. Uh, the, the pile drivers do generate noise. Um, and I, I don't have, um, the exact decibel amount on me right now, but, uh, but it is, it is a loud noise. But, um, like I said, we, we don't expect that to be, uh, going on for more than two months.
But there would be a pile driver used, or are those two different options?
There would definitely be a pile driver used.
You also didn't respond to the Easton abutters' questions.
Which question?
We live right, where one of the houses that put directly into the bog, so...
There's several of us.
You're putting money aside, but it, it's not counted as Easton houses, because we're not, probably not Norton. But we're still, whereas it's impacted as much as anybody else in the realm.
Uh, it's, it's not something we've, um, considered or looked at. I think those homes are quite a bit further away than, um, the homes in Norton, so, uh, well, from the actual panels themselves, I don't see how that's not possible.
You see it?
You see them, we're gonna hear it, we're gonna hear the construction, all of that is part of it. It affects us as much. We might not be as close as a couple of houses, but we're right there.
I, uh, regardless, I think that's, I mean, that's something that we're willing to consider and take back. I don't think that's something that can be decided on by this planning board.
No, we think the planning board...
But we, we understand the, the question. The question also is, what jurisdiction we would have, uh, if they wanted to volunteer to do it, and certainly enough, it would stop us, uh, stop them, but I don't know, I, I'm not saying it couldn't be done, but legally, I don't know whether we could require that, but, um...
Well, that's applies, it's a Norton project, but it affects a lot of people.
I understand, I understand. Um, the first four people that wind up, uh, have asked their questions and responded to. And again, the reason for putting the limit on is so that people could ask questions, and, uh, the assumption was that people would be prepared. Uh, this is on the agenda until 9:30, and I'm gonna let it go to 10. So, I'll leave it to you folks if, if, uh, because most of you got up after I put a, a limit on the first four. Uh, so, if you wanna go ahead and use three minutes, or you wanna yield to someone else, that's up to you. But you're up to three minutes, and we're gonna end this at 10.
I'm Chuck Gallagher, 208 Bay Road. We appreciate the limited time. This is our livelihoods. This is our houses, our homes, our families we're talking about. Not a company trying to make money. I also don't appreciate somebody coming into that town, basically calling us that wrote that letter, and our attorney flagged the cost of lawyers. It's how we took it, well, many of us. I hope you read the letter, send to us, because there's a lot of good information on there. And I would like you to rebut everything that he spoke against tonight in writing to us, but, he basically said the whole thing was lying. I want that in writing. Also, he's, you don't remember, this is a Mass, they're being paid by the government. Massachusetts is giving them a percentage of the pay. All their studies are coming from Mass colleges, Mass businesses, Mass conferences.
This will get close to your mic. Do you mind just pulling...
Sorry, it's a conflict. It's a conflict. All Mass organizations are dealing with. They're making, and they're making money. We're here to keep our houses and our families safe. Tonight, we're gonna make three or four mistake statements tonight. In the party, we spoke about the abutters, they spoke to the whole room, started beginning to speak to one of us. The solar, uh, T-Mon Solar Panels, that is misleading titles and name only. The companies with the real estate was in Illinois. You can't compare Illinois to New England. It's like a day. Incorrect blueprints. There were certain mistakes in those original blueprints. There's continuously made mistakes. They're supposed to be crossed, the Ts and not the Is, because this is their big project. This is the, the gilly pig project for the state. They should have all this stuff done. It should be perfect. The, um, another thing to think about is things that we thought were safe in our history in the, in the past. We thought radiation was safe. They used to use it in toys in the 50s. We thought asbestos was safe. They have it in all kinds of buildings that has to be torn apart. We thought tobacco was safe. We used to smoke that in hospitals. We thought that was safe. We found that in toys. We find it in paint. We find it in solar panels. We find it in the coatings of galvanized steels. I was in Marine Corps for four years, almost 40 years ago. Now, in the last three years, they've had a crash accident suit that's bound in water was contaminated. Forty years later, because they never did studies, we have hundreds of people going to hospital with cancer, thousands of people with cancer who served in Marine Corps now because the water wasn't tested. Long-term testing is what has to get done here, and if the town doesn't do it, it's careless for you to go forward with this project. It's reckless for you to go forward with this project. It's more like negligent. You have to test the water. You have to test the radiation. This stuff has to be done. He's already trying to put down the gun tonight. We're saying we wanna get this done tonight, basically. It's been a rush for this program the whole time, folks. You can't let them do that to us. If they say, if they do a study, long-term study, not by UMass, and they say it's good, then what can we say? We have nothing to argue about. But these studies aren't being done. They should have the Ts crossed, the Is dotted, and they haven't. And I don't wanna suffer for it because of it. I don't want my family suffering for it. I don't want these people's families to suffer for it. We gotta do the right thing. If it's gonna be shoved in a throat, it's gonna be done right. Long line. Thank you.
Hold on, the applicant gets to respond.
I'll just respond briefly by saying the abutters' request was that we respond to everything in the letter, which we did in the, um, letter that I just, uh, sent to you and circulated earlier this evening. I think, I'll just, since much of that is covered in what I provided to you, I'll just leave it at that.
Mary Ann Johnson, 208 Bay Road. Um, and as a firm, I'm back to Joe. Um, just one quick thing still to this day, you haven't approached us, and we live right where you're in the startup building. Uh, you haven't talked to us about screening. You're talking about five to 10 tall trees that maybe cover a one-story house. There's one house that I can think of in this area...
I'm sorry, could you hold the mic?
It's not a two-story house. So, I don't know how five is in for a tree.
And rather than addressing the applicant, can you just direct your comments here so we can both hear them and then make sure they're answered?
So, just quickly, what I wanna say, just back to screening, and I wanted to address him because continuously, he has not approached 208 Bay Road, and we're right there. So, can we get this back to Joe?
Uh, actually, I'm gonna let them respond, and then Mr. Coglione.
Um, so, to, um, your, was that your husband that spoke earlier? Yes. Okay, I'm, um, like I said, I'm more than happy to talk with you about any impacts to the pool, if, uh, if there is any damage to that. Uh, I can give you a card, so we can talk later.
How can we have approached previously? I don't really care about that, because you keep saying approach the abutters, and you talked about, and you talked about screening. So, you keep calling aside, but I'm gonna call you loud. You don't approach us at all.
Uh, yeah, I never said I approached all of the abutters.
All right, we, we, we know what he said, and, and rather than debate what he said or he didn't say, I wanna hear his answer. I, I, you, you had your chance, and I'm looking for a response.
Again, for the record, I never said I approached all the abutters. I said I had conversations with some of the abutters, which is true. Um, I never, uh, I did not, um, go door-to-door talking with people.
I'm sorry, but let him respond, and then we'll get on to the next better question, please.
Yeah, we just, we, we let the project run its, uh, natural course. We provided all of the notifications that were required, and after providing those notifications, some landowners reached out to us, and every single person that did reach out to us, I've went and met with personally and had, um, discussions for as long as they wanted.
I assume rhetorical question. I assume you're okay with Mr. Coglione stepping in front of you. That's fine.
I'll ask again a question that I asked earlier. If Nexon believes there are other bogs available in the town, have they approached those owners, and if not, why not? Also, I spoke with the bog manager, Andy, and asked him how this is gonna work. He said he has no idea how this is gonna work, and everybody in the industry that he's spoken to has no idea how this is gonna work. Just to, to point that out. Also, even though there may be a couple of extra-large projects in Massachusetts, if you add up the nine megawatts we're blocking above here with the three over here, that's 12. And the math still works, since most of the projects in the state are one to two megawatts, it's still 48 times bigger than most of the projects in Massachusetts. So, that's, that's hard. Next thing is, as I said to you before, even though this should be...
Fire, I'm being out.
As I said to you before, even though this should be rejected, at a minimum, what should be happening is, this should be gone, because there is gonna be a problem with this. There's either gonna be crop failure or financial failure here. If you reduce this project to 4.5 megawatts, which is financially possible, and I've checked that with experts in the industry, you move this whole thing back down here behind our farm to hide it, get as much of it off the road, that should help with the devaluation issue. It's not gonna solve it, but it'll help. When we're all back here, that, at the least, that's what I would do if I was gonna go forward with things from the standpoint of minimization. As I said before, if eight megawatts, now 8.7 is required, then this is not the site for it. Finally, I think that this project shouldn't be rejected for too many reasons, aside from everything else that's been said. One, the town should not be supporting placing an industrial power plant into a residential neighborhood. This conflicts with the purpose of zoning for use. As an example, since the bogs have to be flooded in the winter to maintain the plants, one of the things that I'm concerned about is that there, because of the generation of electricity, the possibility of stray voltage, it might affect animals or plants, excuse me, animals or people walking in the area. The second reason that this project should be rejected, and it should be 7-0 by the board because of this one reason alone, this project will devalue the neighborhood against the rights of the residents. Although claimed to be for the greater good of the town, it will be paid for by the abutters who oppose it. I believe there is a conflict of interest between town leadership's approval of these types of projects and the residents that are negatively affected by these schemes to raise money for the town. It doesn't matter if we're raising 4 million or 40 million. This is against the relationship between the town and its residents. The town is un... The town is unfairly asking one neighborhood to pay for the financial benefits the town receives. This amounts to a partial eminent domain where the town's support of this project takes value from the neighborhoods without compensation.
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Cogliano, time is up. All right, then she'll have to go to the end of the line.
No, you either give, no, then make your statement, or... Again, I don't really care who speaks, I just want to make sure that people get an opportunity.
My name is Kelly Gallagher. I led a 201 Way Road. I just want to say I think it's absolutely insulting when Adam is saying tonight, no one has presented any false, more false or misleading statements than he has. He's beyond defensive tonight, because we've exposed him through our accurate research and submitted peer-reviewed studies. I feel like I'm in charge tonight, and the rest of the planning board needs he's been in, because I've heard, I believe, more times than I can imagine. The town has no way to enforce this state compliance, and the state admits that they haven't developed a tool yet to determine the compliance. So I just think this is, in other words, is a hot mess. And Joe, you can finish, please.
Hold on, hold on. You have to get to the end of the line if you're, if you're going to give him his, your time. I'm sorry. Before he started, I wanted to make it clear that if you're giving him your time, and I'm wasting your time in terms of collectively, if you're giving him your time, then you need to go to the end of the line. If you're not giving him your time, then you get another two minutes and 30 seconds. So take your pick. Well, to explain... That's fine, he's got two minutes and 30 seconds. I understand, he's got two minutes and 30 seconds, Mr. Cogliano. Before you start, I'm going to allow the applicant to respond to the 30 seconds if they so choose.
So, just quickly, Mr. Cogliano?
No, no, I'll let you respond to Mr. Cogliano, leave, yeah, leave.
Yeah, so we did respond to the letter that Ms. Gallagher referenced, point by point. And I think you can leave it for yourselves to determine. I mean, just the last thing, she just said that there is no tool available is entirely false. There is a tool available online. So there's just, there's, it's just another example of what we're pointing out to be false statements and irrelevant information presented by the abutters. So should I respond to Mr. Cogliano?
No, I'll let Mr. Cogliano, he's got two minutes and 22 seconds.
So the point is, should we be approving a project that will destroy a beautiful open area in the town on a scenic road? This is literally the entrance to Norton from Easton, it's the first thing you see on the right-hand side. Should we be creating a class of victims in the town by approving a solar power plant in a residential neighborhood? I do not believe that we should be pursuing a solar future by burning our neighbors. I think the second question I ask is, would any of you want this in your backyard? I don't think you would. Now, what I'd like to do is give you some information I have here.
We'll pass them out, if you want to, just drop them off, we'll pass them out.
Wait a second, you get it. Why should I email anyone, I'm just going to write it out? What, can I have the other?
Oh, it's not there.
I should be ready.
Just want to make sure they get them for now, and I'll steal some of the money that we have.
You're using up your time, Mr. Cogliano. You're using up your time.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay.
Go ahead.
If you look at this, if you look at what I handed out, you'll see that the first page is a picture. This is the Cramburgh Bog, 1.1 megawatts, where this was the initial experiment of solar over CRAMBRIGH. You can see the before and after. I want you to look at that second picture. Look at the scale of that, that's 1.1 megawatts. Look at it in relation to the buildings next to it. Now imagine this project is going to be eight times that. On the second page, that's the view you're giving up. And then the initial information is on the mounting problem of solar panel waste, which I think is an issue that should be also taken into consideration. So I think at that, at that point, I will turn it over to that one, next person.
Yeah, I'll let Adam respond to your...
Right, so there are other CRAMBRIGH bogs in town that can be used for this program. We have not approached them mainly because we, you know, we own the land abutting this parcel, and for that reason, we have some strategic advantages to being able to develop a project on the Atlantic parcel. And that's the reason, along with Mr. Bottomless' interest in the project, that we pursue a development here. And we have, we can pursue a development on every single CRAMBRIGH bog in any town. So we focused our efforts on this one. I also wanted to respond to Mr. Cogliano's comments about talking to Andy. Andy's the man who lives on-site at the CRAMBRIGH bogs. And the person that actually manages the bogs strategically, Anne For Harvest, is named Mike Guigno. And he's the person that we've been in discussions with about how to actually implement this. And another person that we've been in consultation with about how to actually make this work is named Ian Ward, and he's a very well-respected NRCS farm planer that focuses on CRAMBRIGH bogs and actually owns CRAMBRIGH bogs himself. He was present at a Conservation Commission meeting a few weeks ago, and the abutters didn't speak. He's actually here tonight as well, just listening, listening in. And if you have any other questions about how, the feasibility of actually making this work, Ian is the exact person you want to ask. So I'm sure he would make himself available for that if you want.
Adam, can you just clarify for me what adjacent property you own?
We own, so we do not own the solar power project itself on this land, but we own the underlying real estate.
Okay.
Adjacent to the property.
All right, that's why I wanted clarification on. So you own the underlying real estate, but do not manage the solar activity on that site?
Correct.
That's leased out to someone else?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, yes, ma'am.
Martha Rom, 201 Way Road. When did you buy all this property?
Say that again, please.
When did you buy? I want to know when he purchased this property.
Okay, and just continue with the questions, I'll have him respond to all of them.
That was one of the questions, and I just wanted to know if any of you have taken any time to go and look at what's going to be going on? Physically, walked the property?
I have.
Okay, anybody else?
Just to be clear, I'm not accused of trespassing, I walked up and down Bay Road.
No, no, I just wanted to know.
I've driven up and...
Because I feel like, honestly, I hate to use this term, but we're a second-class citizen.
I've driven either side...
We don't have any streetlights there, and I just kind of feel like it's just going to push up on us to have this.
I've driven either side of the road, I've had a walk, gotten out of my car, walked, but I've driven up and down Bay Road, across to Fairleigh Lane and the Van Broe's. It's a long, 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 long time.
I second what Steve said.
That you've gotten out, you've walked it, just driven it.
We've been up and down the road into Fairleigh, yeah. Familiarized myself with it, yeah, on Bay Road, yeah.
And you've gotten out and walked it.
I've not walked it, I've driven it.
Well, that's, that's the next thing you've driven it. Lots of people drive Bay Road.
I've drove it... Ma'am, I drove specifically looking at the houses, at the bog area. I didn't just drive to drive Bay Road, so, just to be clear, specifically for this project.
Well, that's good, I'm glad, so you do know where we're located then.
Yeah, your time is going, so...
That's okay, I don't care if my time is going. This is, this is a big deal to us. This is huge. I just want to know, is it showing here in all the abutters?
I'm sorry, but, madam, your time will be up. Again, ask whatever questions you want of the applicant or us, but...
I just want to know how many people have approached you? One, two, okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I don't know if there's a response, but if there is, floor is yours.
Two.
I don't, I don't think I have a response, I don't think there was a specific question.
Yes, ma'am.
Your question was what year did we buy the land?
What year did I want to re-purchase the land? He said he was only looking at the CRAMBRIGH bogs.
This property over here, yes. That was the end of 2017.
And it's not owned yet?
That's not purchased yet. Fred Bottom is who owns the land.
So you could negotiate a loan for it?
We have an agreement in place for a specific price.
Okay, again, we're not going to have a debate, and the answer to the question, please, madam, you're up next.
Hi, Deppenau, 5 Fuller Drive. There was a question that came up from one of the board members earlier about screening on Fuller Drives.
Yeah, it was me.
And, and there was a response that there was no one for it, which is absolutely inaccurate, false.
Could you just do a little bit, you're at, what number Fuller?
Five.
Number nine Fuller Drive, at the very end. I live at five.
Okay.
Number nine is the new house at the very end of our cul-de-sac. And it's wide open to the bogs. So I just walked back there two days ago, and it's completely wide open to the bogs. So I feel like we're putting the cart way before the horse even talking about screening, when we have much larger and serious issues to deal with than screening at this point. But I just wanted to clarify that there's no screening, I'm sorry, that there's no screening planned for Fuller Drive, and there should be. Okay? And also, it's hard to tell from that plan. This is actually the first time I've seen a plan that has panels on bogs close to Fuller Drive South and Fuller Drive, I haven't seen that before. The plans I've seen to date have been minuscule and really hard to read. But further north, there was a question about what property was to the rest of the inverters. And you can't tell from this map, but you might want to just look and see where Tipping Lane is, because it's off of Burt Street, and it does go back in that direction. And I'm not sure how far back, but it may be worth looking at that as well, because there could be potential abutters. And also Carroll Drive, which is further down Burt Street, closer to Plain Street, as well as Massa Soria, all of ours. And we're all going to be subject...
Smart, Stone Run.
And Stone Run. And we're all going to be subject to listening to all this noise, we've got wells. So I share all of these concerns, and they're real concerns. And you're our planning board, so please do the right thing and take care of us here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, so you're behind that house?
Yeah, I'm right here, I'm number five.
That's number, number...
That's number nine?
Number nine is shown on the map, so you're right, adjacent.
There were two new houses on our street that weren't on the last plan at all. Number nine and then number 11, were not even on that plan. But this is all, I know, but I just walked back there. Wide open, you can see all the bogs from there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Adam, did you want to respond?
I'll respond quickly by saying we're happy to take another look at that. With the, based on our, you know, walk of the area, it did appear like there was an area thick existing vegetative screening in place. We're happy to do another pass and, and, you know, come back with something if it looks like it could be helpful.
Yes, ma'am.
Georgie Arbretidis, 207 Way Road. I want to give a couple of my minutes to Joe, I just have a...
I'm sorry.
I wanted to let Joe speak, use a little bit of my time.
That's fine, if you get to the end of the line.
I'm not going to give all of my time.
Well, you tell me...
I don't want me to tell you what I have to say, and then I give it to her.
You want to speak first, or let him speak, I don't really care, but...
Okay, so I just wanted to say that I did speak to Hill Street residents, and they said that they could hear the noise from the solar panels non-stop, 24 hours a day. I quote that. And I do also want to quote Adam at one of his, not the last meeting, but the meeting before, referring back to the CRAMBRIGH, the yield, or whatever it would be. And he said it is certainly uncertain what productivity will be. That is a huge concern of mine. This is what we're talking about, farming with the solar on top. And he said he, it's certainly uncertain. So I just wanted to put that out there, and... And I wanted to know who will oversee this project. I'm not sure the town has the authority to do so, or it would be the state, and what would happen if they do not withhold their end of the bargain, so to say.
Yep, actually, I'm going to let Adam respond to what the young lady asked.
I think that what I'll respond to is her comment about the yield being uncertain. I think that is true, that is what I said, and that is still true. But, you know, we're continuing to gather additional evidence. And like I said before, we've got some really interesting documentation from the UMass Cranberry Station indicating that the Cranberries should actually do very well in a 50% shading environment.
Mr. Cogliano, you have two minutes.
Hi, could, Adam, could you provide a copy of the interconnection agreement? And a copy of whatever letter you used regarding predetermination application? I appreciate that. Also, I have three quick questions. What is the conversion efficiency from DC to AC? What is the storage efficiency of DC? And what is the total capacity of the storage system?
I was trying to write down those questions as fast as I could, but the... Let me know if I missed anything. We have actually provided a copy of the predetermination request to the Conservation Commission. We're happy to provide that to the planning board as well. The interconnection agreement, I'll have to check with legal counsel as to what exactly we can provide, but I would assume that we could provide at least a redacted copy of that. I'm sorry, I didn't get your last one down.
What is the conversion efficiency from DC to AC?
Oh, so, right, so this project is now 8.7 megawatts DC, 2 megawatts AC. So that's a, the typical solar design metric is your DC to AC ratio. It's not necessarily a conversion efficiency. The solar panels themselves convert roughly 17 to 18% of the available sunlight into DC electricity. The DC power then in this system will all flow back to the inverters and battery storage devices, depending on how much, basically depending on the amount of sunlight, and at a given moment will dictate how much power is flowing into the inverter and the battery storage device respectively. The battery storage has roughly a 95% one-way efficiency, meaning it's 95% efficient on the way in and on the way out. So you lose 5% on the way in and 5% on the way out. The inverter is 99% efficient. The storage capacity is, is, is 6 megawatts DC capacity.
So if 6 megawatts DC, what's your, what's your 8.7 megawatts system, what's that for?
8.7 megawatts of total generating capacity with an inverter output of 2 megawatts. And, and so if you think about, you know, during full sun, we'll be producing 8.7 megawatts of power. And from there, 2 megawatts will go to the inverter and directly to the grid. grid. And, um, 6 megawatts of that will go into the battery storage device. Uh, the remaining 0.7 megawatts, it will, will be what we call clipped, meaning it's just, it doesn't go anywhere. Uh, but that's the most efficient, that's at full sun. But of course, that, that only happens for one to two hours a day. So as the sun declines, then the full, um, generating capacity of the project will either be absorbed by the batteries or directly put onto the grid by the inverter.
So, so you're saying?
Ms. Coglan, your time is up. Um, um, we've got 15 more minutes. Again, I don't really care who asks questions or speaks. I'll leave that up to you folks.
Hi, yeah, I'm Linda Sweeney from Stone Run Drive. So a couple of questions for Nexon. Um, now that I know you own that land that already has the solar panels on it, did you own it and then the solar panels were installed, you leased it out? Cause I also read a report where you were planning another solar project that you didn't end up completing. I think it was turned down. And that is because you, your company actually wasn't going to do the work with some lawsuit and everything. So just like, do you lease out or have, what's our, what's our, um, guarantee that your company is actually the company that's gonna be responsible for this solar if approved? That's, uh, and then also, I was wondering, in this area, it's, I haven't heard anything about historic, the Historic Commission weighing in. It's, this Bay Road, like PCH Route 66, it's on the National Historic Registry, which means it's also view protected. The view is supposed to be protected. It doesn't, it, the way it is, it's supposed to be protected. So has this Historic Commission weighing in on this? And then also, and lastly, I was raised by parents that taught me to follow the laws. I stop at red lights. I don't steal. I license my dogs in a town in Norton. That also means following the, the zoning laws. I came to Norton, we all came to Norton, looking at the whole way the town was laid out with its zoning laws, comfortable buying our homes where we want them in a residential district. Comfortable, knowing I'm not gonna have a McDonald's belt maybe to me, cause it's not allowed by zoning. And Mr. Fernandez, at the last meeting, you said we're only here to see if this project fits within the zoning laws. I had that, I had a hard time following that statement from you because you made an amendment to the laws, giving solar companies, a foreign company to Norton, the right to come in and build it. And it's called manufacturing. Solar is considered manufacturing by the courts in the state, putting a manufacturing plant in a residential neighborhood. The zoning laws have been upheld by the land court in many, many cases. I'm sure the fine counselor can tell you hundreds of them. They're there for a reason, for predictability. So I know I can buy my home in a residential district and I'm not gonna have a manufacturing plant in the next door to me. And I'll be protected because the people in charge here, the planning board, the selectmen, the town administrator, will follow the laws that are in place. And it's very disingenuous to pass an amendment, change the laws and change the lives of so many people. And this thing about putting aside fines and all that, that's not gonna matter. There's no way to quan, quantify that.
Thank you.
And.
Thank you, but your time is up.
How, how much more time?
It is up. You used two minutes.
I was gonna say, you're not only affecting.
I understand.
You're affecting every resident in Norton.
I understand.
Cause Norton is now.
Madam, your time is up. And we can argue, but there's only another 10 minutes. I wanna get as many people to, to, uh, did you wanna respond in any way? I'll decide whether he wants, if he wants to respond, then respond.
Uh, just responding to the comment on the historic jurisdiction. Uh, we're not aware of any, uh, jurisdiction by Historic Commission over the project, but we will look into it to confirm that's the case. Uh, to the board, please.
Yes, sir.
I cannot from five Fuller Drive to Plainboard. This area right here looks like it's brand new in terms of solar panels. I don't remember, don't recall that big of a name. It's the first I've seen of it. This.
Last meeting.
I'd like to know what's the distance from the homes in Fuller Drive? And when they start this project, if, when they start this project, we have over 23,000 panels going in. There are supports they have to install, probably over 200 supports. And the gentleman said that it's gonna take six to eight months, six months to drive supports into the ground. This area and over this area, what, I wanna know from the board, what's the impact on the foundations of our house? But I know Adam can guarantee that, Sun Energy can guarantee that there will not be any damages. He can probably guarantee, or the board can guarantee, our safety's fine, our quality of water will be fine, our quality of life will be fine. There's no damage to the environment. Our property values, I know, they will all go down, but if they do and when they go down, to compensate for that loss, what happens to our tax rate? Our tax rate for this town will go up. There's no question. So then the planning board needs to deal with the entire town regarding this project and lock our tax rate one up. So those are my concerns. Um, you, you guys are basically guaranteeing our livelihood, our quality of life. And this project has too many unknowns. There are no studies for this type of project. I don't care what he said. I haven't seen any report. None of us have for this type of solar project. So on the last question, I have hours of operation. Um, I don't really wanna listen to six to eight months of pile driving in my foundation. So I hope the board here has conditions, if there is damage to our homes, how are we gonna compensate? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just quickly say, I think Stacy's confirming the distance.
So, um, as, as best I can tell, it's approximately 600 feet. I can certainly get an accurate measurement, um, from the homes from Fuller to the panels. And, and I'll mention, I guess this has come up a few times with this, uh, was discussed at the last planning board meeting, we had added the solar panels during the initial revision.
And also to the point about hours of operation, we're more than happy to have conditions for another project in terms of when noise can be generated on the site.
I'm sorry.
Just a quick thing. There are no fire hydrants that are working on Fuller Drive. So now we have.
Okay.
A solar farm 600 feet from a street that has no fire hydrants.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Janine Simmons, 15 Massasoit Avenue. Um, of course, I'd like to say I've heard a lot about things not being relevant and speculative. And part of that concern, even in any trial, you have experts that come from either side. It's just a matter of, a matter of who you want to believe. In which case, this is why I think the board should seriously think of doing the peer study to get a better handle on this. Um, as Fred Adam talking about renewable energy being better farmers, I don't really understand. Yes, renewable energy is good and it is wonderful. However, it's not gonna do anything for us if we're not getting the energy to us. It's something that's gonna be put out to everyone else, something that if you look on your electric bills, you are now paying a fee for, a solar subsidized fee for, um, which is not correct, which is not right. Viability of the land. Now, if this project does not work out, if it's put in and it doesn't work out, they take out a bond, take the panels off, what is their intent to do with those bogs? Because now they are bog owners and now they are farmers. So what is their intent? Will they continue to farm the bogs? Will they sell it off? Will they just let it overgrow? Um, he talked about Mr. Bartley not being a farmer. That is correct. He's not a farmer. However, he has a lot more at stake. If those bogs are not farmed and do not yield, he does not make any money. They are not farmers by choice. They are farmers because they are purchasing the land to put energy on. If the bogs do not produce, they still get their money from the energy. So that's something to definitely think about. Um, he talked about Mr., um, Ian Moore being here. I was at the conservation meeting. He did not come up with anything really. He talked about how people get together and become ingenious about creating new ways to get things done. Um, oh, and then he talked about active cranberry bogs, other active, or other cranberry bogs in the town. I don't know of any that are active, and maybe they are, but perhaps they haven't approached them because they aren't active and they cannot get the same benefits or get it approved because they cannot do dual use on them because they are not active. Now, if someone else comes in while they come in and look at those cranberry bogs, will we, as a town, make them farm those cranberry bogs? That's another thing. Um, you know, and the cables. We talked now about cables that will be hanging from the, um, solar panels. Will those be tight to the solar panels? How far will they be hanging down? There are animals and birds that fly around there. And I am very big on the ecosystem in this town, which by the way is being destroyed. So I'd like to make sure that.
I'm sorry, but your time is up. Thank you. Did you wanna respond?
Respond quickly to a couple of specific questions. Um, the board mentioned that, um, if the bogs do not produce, uh, yield, then we still get the money. That's in fact not true. Part of the requirement of the SMART program is that, uh, we need to continue , uh, active agricultural operation at the site. And if we don't, we lose our financial incentive. And we could also be subject to, uh, having our conservation permit rejected because, uh, the other reason DEP allows it is if we, uh, are a dual-use project on an active cranberry bog, um, and, um, complying with the SMART program. Uh, the question about, uh, cabling, the, uh, within the arrays themselves, and when I say that, I mean, uh, within like one of these squares of panels, uh, the, the cabling will be suspended down the middle of the array. Um, essentially, uh, there's, there's a, a drive line that goes across the middle and the cables will be, um, suspended, um, well, directly attached to that drive line, um, at 10 feet, uh, in the air. And then, and once we, when, once we reach the, uh, the edge of the array, at that point, uh, we go underground, um, to the edge of the bog where it then goes, uh, underground up to the inverter and, and only goes overhead once the power comes out of the inverter back to the interconnection point.
Uh, thank you. It's, uh, now 9:57. I'm gonna allow this gentleman, uh, to give him three minutes. We're, I said at the outset, we're scheduled to 9:30. Um, letting this go till 10. We still have other business. So this is gonna be continued. I'm sorry, I should use the mic. Um, please go ahead.
Scott, I can tell you on Bay Road, and three quick ones. The first one was, uh, I'd like to understand how the 50% shadowing or shading is calculated. Is it based on area or is it a certain time of year with the azimuth and sun acting shade? Just curious about that. The second question I had was on the pile driving. Um, is that equipment using vegetable oil or hydraulic oil? I understand when they harvest with hydraulic equipment, they replace it and use vegetable oil, just in case anything leaks or drops out. And the last, uh, question I had was, you said there was 22,625 panels. And in one of the documents you provided here, it says the number of peers is estimated to be four panels per peer. Just curious on what kind of conservative estimate that is and how many filings there may actually be. Rough calculation, it's about 5,000. So those are three questions.
Very briefly, uh, the document that gave out our references is an impact calculation. We took a conservative approach and took the, uh, least number of solar panels per peers, which results in the most number of peers. So for our floodplain calculation, we were providing compensatory storage. Uh, essentially, we likely overestimated the number of peers, uh, to ensure that we more than captured flood calculations. So that four panels per peer is a conservative, conservative estimate specifically for the purpose of impact calculations.
Wow, one minute left. Oh, I'm sorry.
To answer the two other specific questions quickly, um, in regards to shading, uh, there is the, uh, the, the shading tool is available online and it calculates the amount of shading produced by, uh, you can input your design. So we input a single access tracker, raised 10 feet in the air, um, with the, and it calculates, uh, at every given hour during the growing season, uh, based on the azimuth of the sun and the angle of the solar panel, what the, um, what the shading will be, uh, in between and surrounding the array in order to comply with the SMART program requirement that note that not a single square foot of the entire area under and surrounding the array can exceed 50% shading at any given hour during the growing season. The other question regards to oil, I don't have an answer for that. I'm happy to look into it.
Supports? How many supports?
I'm sorry, we're, we're done, we're done with the, I'm sorry, we're done with the discussion for this tonight. We're gonna continue it with a motion that I assume will be duly made to continue this to, uh, our March 12th meeting because the 5th is already posted and 5th.
Second.
There's been a motion on 2nd to continue to March 12th, the time to be determined, and a location, folks, because.
Thank you.
We may or may not be here, so just keep an eye out for where we're gonna be.
Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, this, one, one of the things we're gonna discuss somewhat pertains to you folks tonight. We got a ton of information in the 11th hour. Uh, no one can read, let alone understand and verify. Uh, so one of the things we're gonna be discussing tonight is, uh, whether in fact we should have a policy that requires any and all information to be given in advance, uh, by a certain amount of time. Um, that's another reason for having to continue this. There's no way we could have digested all this stuff today. Um, so, uh, we will, one of the things that I, it's not on the agenda, but I'll, I'll consider under Planning Board business policies. Um, Paul and I had spoken earlier today whether in fact we should have a, uh, some form of policy that requires, uh, any submittals to be, um, in fact submitted by a certain period in advance of the meeting. So I'll open it up for discussion or perhaps Paul wants to start that discussion.
We also, we have about two weeks to find out about the trial. Cause that was your line.
Again, I understand the sentiments, uh, and we'll listen to those same sentiments at March 12.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I, I just wanted to, uh, bring this up. And it wasn't just because of today, but as you know, with some other projects that, um, a lot of information has been going back and forth. And we do our best to quickly get this information out to the board. But oftentimes, it's, we're getting it day before the meeting, day of the meeting. And I just wanted to have this conversation with you all to see, is the system, is the process we have working now for you? Or should we, like with the Conservation Commission, where they have a pretty stringent requirement of, you have to have, you're providing significant information, you have to get it to them a week before the posted here, posted hearing, or else it's continued from, uh, from that meeting to a, to another, to another meeting. And I just wanted to see if there were opportunities, if there were options, Stacy, you all would like to see?
I'm sorry, Jack.
Yeah, I actually agree that we should receive everything up there. Um, so at least a week ahead of time.
I would agree.
Well, well, uh, uh, yeah, actually, thank you for, I'm gonna clarify that. I don't mean, I do not mean, uh, uh, fuders, residents, supply, I'll be very, I meant applicants. So I just wanna be clear, applicants for, uh, yeah. So when we, this, you all can choose to submit, although I would say as, as much as you can. And I realize you're on busy schedules, but if you can get, the sooner you can get information to us, the sooner we can get it to the board. Um, but obviously, you can get it to us as, as, as you can, even up to the meeting. Uh, you know, I just recommend the sooner you get it, we can, we can get it to them earlier.
I will. And specifically for me, there, there is a lot of information that comes in at the 11th hour. We have documents being handed up to us during the meeting. There's, there's no possible way to consciously listen to a speaker and try to disseminate the information, sometimes many pages of information. So this, I'll. So this, a lot has been provided so far, a lot of good information, um, that takes time to read through, um, form an opinion, understand, develop questions. Um, certainly, I, I think a week prior is reasonable to allow, you know, members on the board, anyone else, the ability to properly and effectively, um, process that information. It is not, you know, really feasible, the way it's been going with, with the volume, um, specific to this project, but pertaining to other projects as well. Um, so I'm, I'm certainly in favor of, of establishing, you know, such a, such a requirement in advance of a, a meeting public hearing.
My second, though.
I would definitely encourage that. I think a week is fine. I only wanna add one other thing, and I think some of the applicants is fine to do it. If they're submitting a revised plan, a significant plan, I think they need to, they need to outline what changes they're making. Uh, condign is done by putting a balloon around whatever they're changing. It's not possible for us to go through a whole new set of plans and try to surmise what they're, what they're changing. So if we can require any major revisions to the plan, revise set of plans that are coming in, require them either as an outline, or it's somewhere in the plan, identify what changes there are, so we can evaluate them without having to look at the entire plan and guess what they're changing.
I mean, I think I agree with everybody that a week seems to be a reasonable timeline. In this case, because we're off of our every other week schedule, I think maybe for our March 12th meeting, we can be a little bit more flexible on that to give everybody here some, some kind of leeway, since this is kind of a new thing we're developing, but...
I think I'm hearing consensus that a week, um, require, that, that English, that a requirement that, um, submittals be submitted, submitted at least a week in advance of the intended hearing date. Um, the only caution I, or the personal caution that I have is that I hate absolute policies. Um, to the extent that if there's a minor correction or a minor piece of information, I'd like to have, uh, as part of the policy, the ability of the, uh, board to waive strict compliance if it's deemed, it's deemed appropriate. With that in mind, I entertain a motion, uh, by anyone on the board to in fact, uh, develop a policy along the lines we've just been discussing.
Second.
I assume that the motion is that we require submittals to be no less than one week prior to the date at which they're gonna be discussed, with the board's ability to waive strict compliance if it feels it's appropriate.
I'd also like to include, um, Orange's comment about any changes...
I'm sorry. That changes be identified either on the plan or by outline?
Yes.
Does that work for you, Orange? Okay, there's been a motion on second, any further discussion? Hearing now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. So that will be our policy going forward, uh, so that any submittal will be done a minimum of a week in advance. Thank you.
Did we vote on continuing the meeting? There was a motion and a second. Did we actually?
God, I thought we did, but... Well, let's...
I'm not sure we did, so...
Well, in the event that, uh, we didn't, do we remember who made the motion to continue to...
My second.
All right. Who made the motion to continue?
Steve.
Steve, my second.
Okay, did we vote on? I thought we did, but...
All right, let's vote.
Let's, let's, both in suspenders, we had a mo, had a motion to continue to March 12th, uh, a time to be determined and a place. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, it's March 12th. I think there are no other internal items to discuss. We approve the minutes, we approve the bills, I need to sign this. Anything else, other than that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.